All right, we have obviously a number of people that want to speak. The public communications and the public hearing are going to be somewhat redundant. So I think we'll go ahead and hold the public communication. We're going to open up a public hearing here as soon as we take care of one little short piece of business. And everyone will have their opportunity to say whatever they want to say, I can assure you. All right. We have one piece of business that is not related to solar farms. We have to vote on the proposed tax rates. The tax rates that are proposed are the same as they were last year. There's no raising or lowering this time. So that tax rate is .791813 per hundred. The no new revenue tax rate is .747303. And the voter approved tax rate is .814459 per hundred. So I need to get a motion to approve the proposed tax rate. Strangely enough, this is not binding, but it's new law and we're required to do it this year. So same tax rate as last year.
So what's the special road and bridge?
Turn your microphone on.
So what's the special road and bridge amount?
Nothing has changed. It's whatever it was last year, this is just the abhorrent tax rate. It's 791813 total. So I think we were at like seven and a half, seven and a half cents on road and bridge. Nothing has changed. Same numbers. We're required to vote on the proposed tax rate, not the, not the road and bridge.
Okay.
So if I can get a motion to approve that, please, we'll move on.
I'll approve the proposed tax rate for now, Judge. Make a motion to do that.
Need a second on that, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. All right, we're going to recess Commissioner's Court temporarily. And we're going to open up a meeting to conduct a public hearing on the creation of the Keys Hollow Clip Road and Weezer reinvestment zones. So I'll just start at the top and work my way down. When you make your comment, if you could hold it to three minutes, that would be great. Please step up to the microphone so everyone can hear what you have to say. We want to hear what you have to say. So I'm, I need Brian Ricketts.
Hello. My name's Brian Ricketts. It's not really about the solar farm, but before one project gets too far ahead, I have bought property in this area probably 21 years ago. It's at the end of Prescott Road. I was told then that Prescott Road would be paved every single year, it's the same thing. This is the year, this is the year, this is the year. Okay, finally, 10 years ago, I moved here permanently and same thing. The road's going to be paved, the road's going to be paved, the road's going to be paved. So now they finally got the road out there, but they're only doing half the road. So my question is, why was only money allotted for half the road? Any other road in the county, the whole road got done, you know? But there's more people that live at the other end that did not get paved than lives up at the front end. So I'm just really curious how you can only budget money for half a road?
I can give you this answer, sir. We do not budget for particular roads. We give each precinct commissioner an allotment of budget for his precinct. And that commissioner and solely the commissioner makes the decisions on what they do with that money. That's probably not the answer you want, but that's the real answer.
Well, no, sir. But I mean, how can you tell the people at the other end of the road that their money and their vote's not good enough?
I, I can't comment on that. My road needs some help too, sir.
Has it needed it for 21 years? Same road?
You, you pass it every day on the way into town, you should try it.
I would invite you guys to drive down Prescott Road, see how many tires you go through, how many truck suspensions you wear out.
I understand. And roads are a problem here. And it comes down to how much money you have to fix them. And that's why we're here tonight, I think.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Jack Cruz.
I want to ask, how important are the taxes generated from these solar companies to our county coffers? If we need more revenue, why would we give up the tax revenue in the initial years? The shady solar companies are given subsidies, tax breaks, and capitalize on accelerated depreciation schedules. What this means is that if their taxable value will be virtually nothing when they begin to pay taxes to Goliad County, the solar companies and landowners who lease to them are going to benefit while Goliad County will be left with the crumbs. Why are we even contemplating this tax abatement? Please vote no to the tax abatement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albright, Bill Albright.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate the opportunity. I've been observing Commissioner Court proceedings for better part of a year, maybe a little more. And I just, I know not everybody's going to agree with me, but I think that the entire Commissioner's Court are excellent stewards of the county's money. And I mean that across the board. I think you've done a marvelous job. The one thing that is painful for me to watch is, is how we're always searching for monies, we're always searching for funds, for worthwhile projects like the gentleman just described. And I think that these projects are a way to abate that somewhat. I want to go back in the past and talk about Coletto Creek Power. I remember almost 50 years ago, it was somewhat unpopular at the time. People were complaining about visual pollution and the like. And, you know, thank goodness, the project got built. At the time, it was the latest technology in coal gasification, which to me was very exciting as an engineer. And I, I just shudder to think what we would have done for the last 40 or so years without it here in terms of funding. Fast forward to the future, I think that these projects are very, very important to the county in terms of first responders, fire EMS, the school system, law enforcement, all of those sorts of things, I think, stand to benefit from a long-term project like these. And I think if projects like these get turned away, I think it has long-term implications for the county. Because what other corporations are want, going to want to come into the county and do business with us? That's one implication. And I think a second implication is, obviously, there would be a positive impact on the credit worthiness of the county. Should in the future there be something like a municipal bond offering or something, this will only enhance, I think, the credit worthiness of the county. So that's, that's all I have, Judge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Albright.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Hoff, Marilyn Hoff. Marilyn Hoff.
Hello. Thank y'all very much for allowing me to address you today. My name is Marilyn Huff Hamilton, and I've been a resident of Goliad all my life. And I really basically have just a few points that I would like to bring before you this evening. And I want to thank you for allowing me to address you. Number one, I firmly believe in an individual's property rights. I feel that we're very blessed to live in a country that we have true property rights. I would not want to live in some countries where we do not have that. As regards to the solar farm, I realize that a lot of the cost of this solar farm will actually be reimbursed by federal government taxes, which we all here pay. So the reimbursement for the solar farm on the government level, from the federal government level, is coming from all of us here in this room. I've heard from different sources that sometimes it's upwards of about 40 percent, that they are actually, the federal government or we are paying for a solar farm. And the requests for the solar farm, this is the point of contention for me, that they want an abatement or exemptions from paying county taxes, to me, is not right and shouldn't be allowed. I don't think they should be given this exemption on their taxes. We all in this room are paying taxes. We are going to see perhaps our property taxes go up. And I haven't heard a whole lot of benefits in terms of employment for people to be able to be employed by this. I've heard of like maybe a few on the, the front side to get it established, but then not a whole lot on the backside. So I don't really see a lot of benefit from employment. I see more benefit to our schools and to the police and that by them paying their taxes. I don't think this is a deal breaker, though. I feel like even if they pay their taxes, which I think they should, there are other counties who have not had them get an exemption on their county taxes, they still built there. So let me reiterate, other counties have not let them have an exemption, but the solar farms have still been built in those counties. So it doesn't mean that they're not going to be built. But I think we should take advantage of them, and I don't think we should be, they should be double dipping on money from us, from the federal government or from property taxes. Thank y'all very much for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Hannah Gohmert.
Good afternoon. Some of you I'm familiar with. For those that I'm not, my name is Hannah Gohmert. I hold a degree in agricultural economics from Texas A&amp;M University with a special concentration in finance and real estate. So the subjects that I'm speaking about today are subjects that I'm educated in. In my profession, I'm a fiduciary, which means that I must always choose what's in the best interest of my clients without putting my own interests first. And that's something that I expect each of our commissioners to do today when they vote. I am also the chief compliance officer of an SEC-registered investment advisory firm. My career is rooted in ethics and doing the right thing for the right reason. And lastly, and probably most importantly, I'm a Goliad native, and I've recently made the decision to move my family back to Goliad, to land that has been in my family for over a century, and land that is less than a mile from the proposed solar farm. I'm here because a tax abatement for Weezer Solar is not in the best interest of our community. And I'm here as a mother for the sake of my children who will grow up here. And I'm here for anyone else's children because of how environmentally and economically destructive this project will be for our county. I want to look at the law and the ethics of this that we're discussing. First question is, may a man or a woman do with their own property as they please? Yes, clearly they can, but that's not the argument today. The question at hand tonight's vote is this. If a property owner wants to open a business on that property that will generate lucrative income and drive up the property value, should the taxing unit accommodate the property owner's business venture by reducing operational costs through not taxing on the increase in property's value? Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code tells us the answer, that an abatement can be granted in new businesses that move to a region with the hopes that in return, the local government gets increased property values that will raise the tax base and provide local jobs. Will Weezer Solar increase surrounding property values? No, I think we can look at local watershed maps and see that Weezer Solar would have watershed that drains into 12 Mile Creek, which also feeds Coletto Creek, which feeds Coletto Lake. In that area, the nature conservatory system classifies that land as bio, biologically significant. Parts of Coletto Lake are also key wildlife areas that are at risk. And then large areas of the lake also reach beyond Highway 59 into protected managed land areas and areas that hold threatened and endangered species. One strong storm knowing we're in Hurricane Alley can cause destruction and start that watershed event. Additionally, not to mention, Goliad is the birthplace of Texas ranching. And so to put a solar farm here in our town, destroying prime farmland at a time when Texas, the, the nation's leading supplier of agricultural exports, were losing farmland at the fastest rate in history, the development of this project will have a domino effect on our local ecosystem and our economy. And lastly, will solar, will Weezer Solar generate jobs for Goliad? No. These companies are based overseas. They have their own construction crews that they bring in and they ship out as soon as construction is done. My husband and I own a commercial construction company, and I can tell you that there have, there have been no bid solicitations for Weezer Solar in these bid solicitation databases. So no local jobs going to our, to our local property owners and citizens here. What will Weezer Solar do for Goliad? Well, property owners, over the course of 30 years, at a going rate of $450 to $1,200 an acre, our property owners will make anywhere from $33.75 to $90 million in 30 years. So if you want your tax revenue, don't grant the abatement. Make the property owner pay their cost in operating their business, just like everyone else. They clearly will have the means. Your vote should represent the values, the concerns, the health, the opinions, and the long-term interests of your constituents. Your vote should be morally and ethically correct, and the resulting actions of your vote should not violate nor should it abuse state tax law. The Texas Tax Code and the facts and circumstances surrounding Weezer Solar are clear, and voting no should be clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Claire Bradshaw.
Good evening. The coal plant is going to shut down and the county is going broke. That's what we were told at the meeting a few months ago. We have to approve the tax abatements for these toxic solar sites in order to financially save the county. But what does that exactly mean? It means that for years, those in position of power in our government have been worshiping, worshiping at the feet of the climate gods. They've told us that coal, gas, and oil are going to destroy the planet. So we must suddenly change to solar or wind for our energy. In doing so, the federal government has thrown hundreds of billions of dollars up in the air for anyone to grab and magically create these solar sites, with about 40 percent of the funding for these, constructing these monasteries coming from you, the American taxpayer. Now, they're asking us, they're asking you to help them out too. That money is then offered to the landowners for long-term leases, for up to $1,400 per acre, per year, for leases up to 30 years long. The companies proposing these sites then bring their slick presentations before local tax agencies such as the county and the school boards. And make no mistake, they are very good at what they do. To believe them will have officials convinced that their entity will be well-funded and no harm will come to anyone because of these toxic sites. After the last meeting, I came away with the conclusion that those who spoke on behalf of the county were only concerned about money, not the health and safety of those living nearby, or the total destruction of their property values, nor the devastating loss of habitat to native game or future impacts on our soil and water. Your tax abatement policy under Section 2, Letter H, Items 4 and 5, covers the number of new and sustaining jobs and the amount of local payroll to be created. Item 10 includes the growth of local population that occurs as a result of this abatement. Section 1, Item 3, states that planned or potential use of property would constitute a hazard to public health or safety would be a cause to deny the abatement. I have been informed by people directly impacted by these solar farms from six different states, that, that the construction companies involved brought their own crews, and only one or two locals were hired, usually as a gate guard. I suspect that the same thing will happen here, and that doesn't sound like much of a benefit to our county. According, according to the solar reps at your meeting, only one to two permanent positions will be required after completion. I find it ironic that only a few years ago, this court and the judge at the time hired an environmental law firm to fight against uranium mining in the same area of Goliad County that would be affected by this solar farm. What happened? The county spent about $1 million to protect us and to protect our water. What happened? Doesn't the court care about the dangers proposed now? I urge each of you to vote no for any tax abatement for this solar company. If tax money is what we're looking for, then tax them fully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Leslie Cruz.
Good evening. The Weezer site to be constructed will be absolutely devastating. The grass and majestic oaks that are hundreds of years old will be destroyed. The natural habitat for deer, birds, bats, and many other beneficial species will be lost probably forever. After completion, those adjacent to this hill will be forced to see the prison fencing when they look out their windows. A major concern facing property owners downstream from this project is soil erosion due to increased runoff. Texas A&amp;M studied the impact of placing solar fields in an area of central Texas. It revealed that runoff has increased by 6% with only a two-inch rain. Imagine what a five or six-inch rainfall could do. The erosion of the soil will be greatly increased with those types of rains. The chemicals that wash off the panels will also move downstream and into the soil and water reservoirs. The contaminated runoff will go directly into Coletto Creek, the lake, and then downstream from there. The solar panels that will be installed are made up of highly toxic elements, including cadmium telluride, a heavy metal, and many others. These are carcinogens for both humans and animals. The large lithium batteries that are proposed to be on these sites are also extremely dangerous, especially when they catch fire. The inverters that will be scattered across this acreage create a loud screeching noise when the sun is shining, making it a miserable experience to be outdoors for those who are forced to live next to this site. The fact that the temperature around these sites has increased by 5.4 to 7.2 degrees will also have a dramatic effect on those living nearby, not only from the ambient air, but increased evaporation of stock ponds and soil moisture. Livestock will also be greatly affected by these unbearable temperatures in summer months. Solar panels not only create more heat in the summer, but they also provide more cooling in the winter. Will the solar company and landowners profiting from this assist the nearby homeowners with the increased payments of their utility bills? And I think we all know the answer to that. Another point, if a single bird touches one of these panels on a sunny day, it will catch on fire. That's how easily a fire can start with these. These fires can be extinguished by water, but instead require special retardants and methods. And the generous $1,500 a year the solar company is proposed to donate to the Goliad County Fire Department, in my opinion, is really a slap in the face. The solar company spoke extensively about fire during the informational meeting attempting to convince us, sorry, that they, that fires rarely happen and that they are prepared to handle one. A rural and remote area managed by one or two employees really doesn't give me much confidence. There's nothing green about solar energy, except the money going into the pockets of the politicians, the landowners, and the solar companies. Solar energy, in my opinion, is dirty electricity. I ask each of you to vote no on any tax abatement for these solar installments. They are for-profit companies that receive taxpayer dollars to contaminate our environment and don't deserve a gift from the taxpayers of Goliad County. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Hoff.
0.4. I want you to remember that number. I have great concerns about living a few yards away from the Weezer site. Water source contamination, panel and battery fires, and the possibility of a battery explosion are paramount to me. You have already heard about the danger of solar panel fires and toxic gases they release. The batteries, though, are much more dangerous. These lithium batteries are filled with an electrolyte, electrolyte, which, if they catch fire, have the explosive energy equivalent to a small nuclear bomb. In the United Kingdom, a proposed solar field of about 800 acres is being proposed and is meeting strong resistance because of the amount of battery storage at the site. Scientists studying the plan described a potential explosion at the site would be the equivalent of 602 tons of TNT, or 1/20th of the equivalent of the Hiroshima atomic bomb. So while the batteries at the Weezer site won't be as large as in the UK, it is large enough to demolish everything within two or three miles around, causing death and total destruction. Should a fire occur at this site, those of us nearby will be forced to evacuate. Does the county have an emergency plan for that? Where will we go? Will the solar company compensate us and cover the expense of our livestock that are injured or die? The landowner has several homes, so that won't be a problem for him. It would not surprise me to learn in the near future that those of us near these toxic dumps will no longer be able to obtain property insurance due to these risks involved. You can be certain that your insurance is very likely to increase because of your proximity to the site. These solar companies pay out millions of dollars to landowners over the terms of the lease. Wouldn't it be better for their bottom line to just purchase the land? They could pocket millions. I'll tell you why they won't buy the land. When the lease expires, they want no part of the disaster they've made. The company will most likely be foreign-owned by then, and the site will be abandoned. It saddens me to think that my children and grandchildren will never have the opportunity to live on the land that I love and cherish, and have worked hard to leave better than I found it. That's what one neighbor's greed does to another. So what is 0.4? 0.4% is the amount of this dangerous thing called carbon dioxide that's in the atmosphere, and it's trivial for changes in the climate. Water vapor, better known as clouds, make up 96 to 97% of any greenhouse effect. 97% of CO2 is created by nature, not humans. Swamps, rice fields, leaves, insects, bacteria, all produce carbon dioxide. Termites alone emit more CO2 than all the factories and autos in the world. Natural wetlands emit, wetlands emit more gases than all human activity combined. If all use of fossil fuels was eliminated along with all the natural sources of greenhouse gases, 96% of all the greenhouse effect would be the same because of water vapor. That's why I call this scam promoted by the government, one of the greatest hoaxes ever perpetrated on the American people. I respectfully ask you to deny this abatement. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clapp-Saddle.
I think that's for public announcement, but I'll go ahead and speak now.
If you have a public comment about the solar farm, please continue.
Yeah, I do. Okay, my name is Charles Clapp-Saddle. Unlike some of you here, I generally, I, in general, support renewable energy, such as solar farms. Also support a landowner's right to use his or her land as desired, especially in rural areas. But there are times a landowner's use can negatively impact other landowners. We've heard some of that tonight. The two previous solar projects were relocated in remote areas with few neighbors. The proposed projects don't enjoy that situation. Let me provide a hypothetical case, but it's only hypothetical because I ended up not doing it. When Susie and I bought our family farm that's been in our family since 1870- When Susie and I bought our family farm that's been in our family since 1870 out by Schrader, we bought it from my mother, we were considering how we would use our 122 acres, since our fish farm only required a few acres. One thought was raising free-range wild Texas boars. Our niece, a famous New Mexico chef, told us that wild Texas boar cost her restaurant $14 a pound. I had lots of experience raising hogs while helping my grandfather on the farm. My grandfather's most productive sow was a feral hog. She popped out huge litters of piglets. Sure, she was mean. You had to use a pitchfork to go in the pen with her, but she was very productive. I figured we'd cross fence, we'd field fencing, add some wells, plant some cane sorghum. Well, you know, you get the scene. We were going to raise feral pigs and haul them off to New Mexico and make a lot of money. Well, in 2000, when we moved here, we only had three neighbors within a mile. And one of those had had a pig farm. In fact, I'd worked on her pig farm at one point. And they were farming and ranching families. They understood that agriculture can be a little bit messy. But by the way, if you haven't visited a pig farm, you have no idea how obnoxious the smell and flies are. They're incredible. I spent a lot of time getting yelled at, "Close the damn door, you're letting in flies." So today, if I suddenly decided I'm going to go after that 14 bucks a pound on feral pigs, I have dozens of neighbors within a mile. Victoria is expanding out into our part of the county. Farms are getting split up. My sister's farm, had one house on it, now has 13 houses on it. Those aren't farming families, ranching families. They don't understand agriculture. If I started the pig farm now, those, well, if I'd started it back in 2000, they would have known. When they came out to look at land, they would have gotten the smell, the flies, they would have been aware that I was raising pigs. But if I started it today, can you imagine the ruckus? Their landowners would be severely impacted by my pig farm. So that's an example of how an individual property's owner rights can conflict with neighbors. Okay? And the neighbors of the proposed solar farms are in a similar situation. Their land values would certainly be affected. Furthermore, as a recent fire at a solar farm near Corsicana shows, fires are dangerous when combined with solar farms. And volunteer fire departments be expected to upgrade their equipment and fight such fires, which require expensive foam rather than water to fight. For those along creeks, the additional runoff from the solar farms could increase flooding. I was at a commissioner's court meeting during a conference call with the company. They were asking, that's asking for the abatements. One of the commissioners asked if they could leave a visual barrier, a buffer zone of trees around the farm so it wouldn't be so ugly. And their answer was trees and solar panels don't mix. They were also asked about fighting solar panel fires. They offered advice to the volunteer fire departments, but at that point noted financial aid. Apparently, they've offered some since. So why should taxpayers, these taxpayers and neighbors of these solar farms subsidize businesses through tax abatements while suffering reduced land values and possibly suffering disasters caused by the solar farms? If these solar farms make economic sense, let them stand on their own without being subsidized by Goliad taxpayers. Think about this. These farms will generate three to six permanent jobs. The city of Goliad got tractor supply with 25 permanent jobs, probably a lot higher paying as well, and no tax abatement. These companies will build without tax abatements. They don't need another subsidy. Thank you.
Mr. Korth.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I want to add to what Measures Gohmert and Measures Bruins have already said. My comments align with some of what they had to say. First, I do want to say, though, I'm not opposed, like Charles, to the construction of solar farms in our county. But if we're going to give abatements, I feel that the industry that's looking to come to our county, there need to be some requirements in those abatements. And doing some calculations this afternoon, if every solar farm is built that's currently being proposed in our county, we're looking at over 20,000 acres of farm and ranch land being removed and wildlife habitat from our county for an extended period of time. That's approximately 4% of the land in our county is going to be removed. So first condition in our agreement should be that the solar company is going to be required to return the land back to its original condition when their solar farm ends its life, which means also the removal and safe disposal of all their production equipment. That we require steps to take to reduce the impacts during their construction, such as from rainfall runoff events, dust from their equipment, and as they're doing their clearing and burning brush piles, smoke abatement. That they be required to repair all the county roads impacted by their construction traffic, and I see on your agenda further tonight, you're working to address that. Required to work with our Goliad County Soil and Water Conservation District to determine the type of vegetated buffer around the solar arrays to filter all rainfall runoff before it reaches our creeks and river. My estimates on the Key Hollow project is that they'll generate 45 million gallons of runoff for every inch of rain that falls on that site. And the Weezer Solar, they're going to generate 14 million gallons of runoff for every inch of rain. So that's a lot of additional runoff that's going to be going to our creeks. That they're required to cover the full expense of all firefighting equipment and training needed for our volunteer fire departments. Again, that our taxpayers should not have to cover that expense. That they're required to work with our Goliad County AgriLife Office and Wildlife Management Association to fund projects that would mitigate the wildlife habitat we're going to lose due to these solar farms. And to work on monitoring water quality at each farm to make sure that our groundwater is not contaminated. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Van Dyke, did you, are you going to wait until later? Ms. Lyon.
I do have a handout now.
I'm sorry.
I have a handout. May I approach? So, good evening. My name is Holly Lyon, and I serve as the superintendent at Goliad G.I.S.D., really the best school district in Texas. So I'm not certain if past administration has taken the opportunity to come and speak to the commissioner's court before about the state of our district. See, this year, we're committed to going all-in with our entire community. I welcome inputs and suggestions, and I'm looking forward to working with you so that we can hold on to the traditions that are Goliad. But while we're holding on to those traditions, to live up to our district motto of preserving the past and preparing the future. I won't take much of your time, but I did notice with 312s on the agenda, I wanted to come and just take a few moments to share with you the impacts and the benefits of 313s and then the solar projects that we're exploring on the district side. See, these projects are a key opportunity for G.I.S.D. to preserve, prepare, and better yet, protect the present and prepare for the future of our district, but in a controlled way. As you know, the majority of our funding at the district side comes from average daily attendance, and that's driven by enrollment trends. See, we currently serve 1,300 students in Goliad County. I could go on and on about school funding, but we'll do that another day, or really the lack thereof of state funding for schools. So the bottom line is our enrollment's declining, and that could potentially throw our staff to student ratios. And this may force us to campaign at other school districts for transfer students so that we can maintain and sustain our current employment numbers. See, G.I.S.D., as you know, is one of the largest, is the largest employer in the county. So these 313 on our side agreements allow us to capture about $464,000 in supplemental payments annually, which is about 10 teacher salaries. So without these agreements, we may not be able to sustain all of our teacher jobs. We graduate about 95 to 110 students each year. So did you know that 74% of our graduates, they don't go on to college? Most of our students, they go straight to the workforce. So investing in career and technical classes is vital, or we're doing our kids a disservice. They've got to be workforce-ready when they leave us. So 313 revenue allows us to invest in welding, nursing, ag mechanics, and other skills that are needed in our area. This additional 313 revenue preserves strong programs like ag and welding. And as you know, this year at G.I.S.D., safety is our top priority. We want to ensure we can slow possible intruders on our grounds and our building entrances. This is a major security concern with the recent events. Our grounds are not fully fenced, and it is time to upgrade building entrances for better protection. You may have heard that last week, day before school started, I had to shut down the elementary gym in the oldest wing of our elementary school. Multiple specialists have told us and deemed our roof unsafe on that elementary gym, and the air quality is questionable in that elementary school wing, built in the 50s. From the district perspective, we would be leaving money on the table without these solar agreements. The additional revenue could be used to ensure safer and healthier facilities for our kids. Our school board is committed to being physically responsible and ensuring long-term financial stability. For G.I.S.D., the solar projects allow us to use a portion of our reserves or our fund balance right now to begin safety updates to our campuses and replenish fund balance from 313 revenue as it starts to come in. Over the course of the projects, we could gain substantial revenue, about $8 million is what we calculate so far. And then that's money that the state can't touch or recapture. It stays here in Goliad County. So as you know, and some of you went to school in Goliad, we have a reputation for producing the best on the field and off the field. We want to ensure we can continue to grow that reputation. And at the end of the day, we don't want to be forced to scout other kids from Victoria or other school districts so that we can sustain our current staff, our current jobs, and our operations at the school district. We sure don't want to continue sending notes home that the gym is unusable, and we're doing the best we can with the money we have to provide safe in schools. Our school board, I know dang sure doesn't want to deplete our reserves without a replacement plan, especially with the crazy nature of school funding. And most importantly, we want to hang on to any revenue that we can and not give it to someone else to make decisions for Goliad kids and taxpayers. So after consulting with our district attorneys, we see the 313s as a real opportunity for the school district to preserve the past, protect the present, and also prepare the future. I know you have many options to weigh, negotiations to be settled on when it comes what is the best route for the county to go on the 312s. We have similar but different concerns at stake. G.I.S.D. wants to partner with the county in sharing the accomplishment of providing safe, supportive schools in Goliad County. So I look forward to working with each of you as the superintendent, a parent, and a taxpayer. I welcome your ideas as county leaders, and I just, I thank you for your time. I did provide a handout for you with some of the real issues that are going on in our district and the state of our district, and I look forward to working with you more. Thank you.
Mr. Gohmert.
Thank you, Commissioner Korth, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I came here tonight really to get some information, to get some answers, and I haven't gotten it.
We haven't spoken, sir.
Pardon?
We haven't said anything yet. We're just listening.
Well, I don't know if you're going to make a decision tonight. If you're going to make a decision, you've got to make that decision based on some data. But anyway, two sides of the coin. My commissioner tells his constituents that he can't fix the roads because he doesn't have money, and we understand that. You know, we are short on finances, and we do need, we do need investment to increase our tax base. So that's the one side of the coin. The other side of the coin is that have we, have we, what kind of, what's the revenue that we're going to get? I haven't seen any, I hear things about, yes, there's going to be revenue, though there's not going to be revenue, there's going to be revenue five years from now, there's going to be revenue 10 years from now. We need revenue now. So that's a consideration. Also, you've heard the people talk about contamination. There are contamination potential issues, and we want to make sure that if these projects go ahead, that these contamination issues are addressed, that they're in writing, that if something occurs, and hopefully we don't, like a fire, we hope it doesn't happen, but if it does, that they're corrected, that they're taken care of. We have water contamination, we have air contamination, we have toxic materials that exist in this kind of operation. And I just ask that as you deliberate these projects, that you do a due diligence on all these issues and make sure that the taxpayers of Goliad County are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parmley.
I'm going to speak a little bit louder and a little bit slower so everybody can understand and hear me. First of all, I'm a petroleum geologist, and I've been doing it for over 40 years. I'm a hydrologist, a biologist, and a geochemist. I've got degrees in all of that. Renewable energy systems, the Weezer project, the Clip Road project, and the Keys Hollow project, this is what I'm referring to. There are two types of lithium ion batteries considered for this project, a lithium ferrophosphate and a lithium nickel manganese cobalt. Both batteries have an increased risk of thermal runaway that causes battery chemical fires. These causes of battery chemical fires can lead to thermal runaway, which are mechanical, thermal, electrical, and environmental. Mechanical failure is when the physical damage occurs to the unit, which can generate gases and increase the heat of the battery cell. Thermal is when the air conditioning or airflow is restricted and not reaching the cells allowing the heat to build up. Electrical abuse happens when overcharging, undercharging, or shorts occur from the inverter. Environmental impacts are when the ambient temperature increases, decreases, the ingress of debris, erosion, dust, heavy dew, rodent damage to the wiring. The effects of these four factors will result in a thermal runaway resulting in a chemical fire. The chemical fires cannot be extinguished by supplying water. They can only be extinguished when the heavy minerals have completely burned themselves out. Stranded energy can occur when the battery has no way of discharging its stored energy. This shock hazard can occur to those working with the battery which still contains an unknown amount of electrical energy. Stranded energy can result in reigniting of a fire within minutes, hours, or even days after the initial event. There are 24 different heavy minerals associated with solar farms, 12 associated with the storage of batteries, and 15 associated storage of batteries, and 15 associated with solar panels. The batteries contain chromium, cobalt, aluminum, copper, graphite, iron, lead, lithium, manganese, nickel, titanium, and zinc. The 15 heavy minerals associated with the solar panels are copper, aluminum, indium, lead, molyndium, nickel, silver, zinc, gallium, selenium, cadmium, tellurium, arsenic, barium, and mercury. All of these can lead to brain, liver, and kidney malfunctions. You can have neurological and vascular damage, immune systems dysfunctions, and causes cancer. It has been proposed by R E S where the two, it has been proposed to R E S that where the two-acre batter facilities are to be located to incorporate an impermeable liner in addition to a ditch and a berm with a containment basin to catch any runoff. Recommendations include a limestone gravel, two- to three-inch size, a 24-inch-thick pad. The limestone gravel would provide an unrestricted drainage and calcium carbonate would not contaminate or compromise any heavy mineral testing. R E S concerns are having an impermeable layer would affect the recharge of the groundwater aquifer. I'll read it again. R E S concerns are having an impermeable layer would affect the groundwater aquifer. In the event of a catastrophic failure of these batteries and leakage of the heavy minerals without an impermeable liner, then it would enter the groundwater aquifer. This groundwater aquifer supplies water to all of southern Goliad, northwestern Refugio, and eastern B County. Soil and water testing is also recommended in the immediate area where there are any damaged or broken solar panels. This would include testing of any water drainage systems or water wells. It is recommended for R E S to provide a detailed map of each solar farm with a list of each solar farm item used in the operations. Identification will include the name, the location, and the GPS coordinates. This includes but not limited to the battery containment containers, the inverters, each solar panel, storage tanks, water wells, access roads, and operations office. I will support R E S to develop their solar farms and any other solar farm companies if they use this impermeable liner and at the battery facilities and allow soil and water testing, independent soil and water testing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bass? Or do we want to let R E S go before?
I'd like to do just a general remarks.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bob Bass. I've been hired by the county here in Goliad to assist them in negotiating possible creation of reinvestment zones for these three projects, and also the possibility of a tax abatement agreement with each of those.
Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right, sorry. Under Texas law, chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code makes provisions for counties to grant abatement agreements. There's really very little that the state of Texas has entrusted to Texas counties in the way of economic development. Chapter 312 is the primary statutory framework for such incentives. Chapter 281 is another chapter of the local government code that allows for similar either tax abatements, tax refunds, loans, grants, and the like. Solar projects are typically developed and wind under chapter 312. Chapter 312 allows the counties to incentivize relocation to the county of an industry that would not otherwise come to the county potentially, and they do that by allowing a tax abatement. that is the vehicle that counties are given. If we were given a little bit more in terms of incentives, we would probably use those, but that's what we have. The counties and school districts and cities that have similar tax abatement authority have, over the last 20 years or so, used what is known as a pilot payment, and the county is contemplating using a pilot payment here. Pilot is an acronym, payment in lieu of taxes. It's a contractual agreement whereby the, essentially what the amount of revenue that the county would realize through a traditional ad valorem appraisal district type of approach and a percentage of abatement of those taxes, the revenue is then averaged from that approach, and essentially the equivalent amount of money is paid to the county directly, does not go through the ad valorem appraisal process, it's a contractual amount of money, but it essentially meets the same revenue stream that the county would realize under a traditional appraisal process. These projects, generally speaking, there are going to, there is proposed two reinvestment zones, one large reinvestment zone, and within that same zone, the Keys Hollow and the Clip Road project would potentially be built, and then a separate reinvestment zone for the Weezer project. The county is first required to create such a reinvestment zone, and then the abatement is applied to, in these cases, the improvements that are made upon the real estate. The real estate itself is not subject to the tax abatement, except indirectly, and by that I mean the parcels that have panels installed on that acreage would lose their ag exempt value and would roll back to the appraised value for the last three years, and that would be paid to the county as an additional revenue stream over and above the pilot payment. The landowners who are possibly within the zone but who do not have panels on their land will see no change in their ad valorem tax base or rate. They are in the zone usually for continuity or contiguous purposes. A reinvestment zone has to have all of its parcels touching each other, if you would. There should be contingency for the zone itself, so there may be parcels within the zone that do not have panels on them. So the statement earlier that there were 20,000 or so acres that would go out of productive use is not necessarily correct. It would be only the ag value for those properties that have panels physically located on them. That property would lose its ag exemption, go to a more traditional commercial type of valuation and appraisal value, usually at the full appraised value for the raw land. So there would be some land lost to ag purposes, but the ag exemption would be lost only on those parcels. We often hear that people are opposed to tax abatement generally. Tax abatements take a lot of forms. The homestead exemption is a tax abatement. 65 and older exemption is a tax abatement. The ag valuation is a tax abatement. So be careful what you pray for. If you're opposed to all abatements, then all abatements should be negated. That being said, we're not suggesting any such thing, but in this particular case, that would be the effect. There would be a pilot payment made by the solar company to the county that are roughly equivalent to, in this case, about a 70% abatement. Now again, these are abatements, taxes, revenue on the amount of ground that is not subject to the abatement would continue to come to the county, so it's not as if the county is getting nothing out of the process. The revenue stream on the Keys Hollow and the Clip Road, they have agreed to a minimum capacity of 150 megawatts with a potential for each of those projects upwards to 200 or possibly more, and the county would receive $495 per megawatt with a guarantee, if you would, of 150 megawatts, and that would produce at that minimal investment of about $134,244 annually in pilot payments. Should it go up to the 200 megawatts, it would be $178,992 per year for 10 years, or roughly between 1.3 million and 1.7, nearly 1.8 million dollars over the 10 years of the abatement period. At the end of the abatement period, the remaining capital value of the project would go on to the tax rolls at full value of the remaining value. Texas law does grant an accelerated depreciation rate to solar projects. That was done 15 to 20 years ago. The state granted that incentive to solar projects to come into the state. Texas is now the largest state for production of alternate energy in the United States, and the biggest part of that has come on from solar in the last few years. Wind has been built in the state going back to probably 20 years ago around Sweetwater. Solar has only really come into its own in the last five years or so, but it has come on in pretty big form. This summer, as you know, has been brutally hot. The demands for capacity of the grid have been very high. Texas Monthly Magazine published an article a couple of weeks ago that really the solar projects have sort of filled the gap of needed capacity in the grid, and without those solar projects that have come online in the last two or three years, it's very likely we would have had rolling brownouts around the state. That's just the realities in that you can now build a solar plant faster, cheaper, for the equivalent number of homes than you can a traditional gas-fired or coal-fired plant. So that is where I think the federal government is going to continue to incentivize alternative energies. I'm not here to debate climate change or the contribution of carbon dioxide, but if you look at any scientific study over the last 20 years, it's unmistakable that we're having a rapid increase in the global temperatures, and particularly in some areas, really rapid increases. Sadly, in the polar areas are where most of that heat is the greatest percentage of increase. So you're seeing effects globally. You can debate it. I'm not here to debate it necessarily, but the real fact is we need as a society more and more energy. This is one way that you can do that. For the financial disclosures on the Weezer, that project is targeted to come in at a maximum of 150 megawatts with a guarantee of a minimum of 112 and a half megawatts. If it came in at its minimum, it would pay the county about $10683 a year in a pilot payment. If it were built out to its maximum of 150 megawatts, it would do 134, 244. So that is an appreciable sum of money each year. There are two other projects that have been built or being built in the county, the Tulsieta, the Peregrine, the Weezer, and the Clip Road, and the Keys Hollow, so there would be a potential of five projects. If all of those projects were to be built at their maximum capacity, well, at their minimum capacity, it would bring about $726,975 a year to the county in additional tax revenues. If they were built out to their maximum with any optional storage, it would be about $100, So it would be about 10% of the county's budget would come from these projects. So I don't know if that satisfies the gentleman who wanted some financial data, but those are the
Is that using a pilot program?
Those are all pilot. Yes, sir.
Do you know the difference between that and ad valorem? What's the difference between that and ad valorem?
It would be the same amount of money. That's what a pilot is. You take the same amount of money, you divide it over the 10 years into an average amount. Under a traditional approach, those payments start out much higher and then decline rapidly, both because of depreciation and because of the statutory accelerated depreciation. So the pilot payment is really the functional equivalent of what you would get under traditional ad valorem payments, but it's averaged out. That gives the county the benefit of knowing what it's going to get each year rather than having to wait until the appraisal process goes. Does that make sense?
So it's not really an abatement? It's an abatement that is spread over several years?
Well, it is an abatement. They're paying less in tax than they would without.
About 70% of what
Yes.
Full tax would be?
Right.
So it's a separate, it's a separate
They're paying, they're paying tax on 30% of the capital value of the project, 70% being abated. Okay?
So it would be less than if it wasn't
Well, if there were no abatement granted, sure, it'd be less.
Yeah, but it would be granted by not using
Well, that presupposes that they would build the project anyway.
They said the other counties have, they've built
There are a few isolated counties where that has taken place. Typically, it's where one, there are three major taxpayers typically in most counties, the county, the school district, and where there's a hospital district, the hospital. Those three usually have the highest tax rates. I've seen projects go where one of the majors agrees to an abatement, and I've seen some counties decline, and they still came, but they're getting the school district's tax abatement, for example. I've seen counties not grant any at all and see the projects not come at all. So it's kind of, it's a mixed bag, I guess, is what you would say. Okay. Does everybody understand what the abatement process and what the pilot payment is? Yes, sir?
Is this all that you consider as the life of the passengers every year that you're going to be in Goliad County?
Well, an extra million dollars, let's say that all of them come in, will have a dampening effect on the tax rate, and so it will push that tax rate downward. Appraised, now, remember that there are two factors in the tax rate. One is the tax rate itself, which is based on the appraised values. It's the appraisal value increases that are driving most of the tax increase. Property values are going up, so it takes less tax to raise the same amount of money, so the tax rate may go down, but if the appraisal goes up at a higher rate, you may end up paying more tax, actually. But those are two separate functions.
Is there a number that we got from the coal plant that we're going to lose?
It's going to be a little, about a million dollars, is it not?
1.158 was the last number I got.
So again, if all five of these projects manifest themselves, and by granting an abatement, or today, if the county were to choose to do that, does not necessarily guarantee that these projects will be built. That's up to the economies of scale and the like, but you can't plan on building it unless you've got your tax debt basically handled, and that's the purpose of granting an abatement early into the process. And that's the purpose of granting an abatement early into the process. There are terms of the abatement agreement itself that I will address after there's a vote on the creation of the zones. We've negotiated what we think are good terms with the developer, RES, for each of these projects, including some screening agreements for those of you concerned about view. But I would prefer not to get the cart ahead of the horse too much on that. Yes, ma'am?
Can I ask a quick question on where the money will come from? You're talking about the mill or the state of Texas? Will provide the funds that you're talking about?
No, ma'am. The funds will come from the taxpayer, which is the project. They're going to be paying thirty percent of what they would pay on the appraised value of the project. They've told us what the value of their investment's going to be. We've based our agreement on that stated capital value. They will still get appraised each year to make sure that what they've represented to us corresponds to the real numbers on the ground.
Are you talking about the extra money that you're talking about from the school district? And that's what they're getting in, where does that come in? Is it from the...
No, ma'am. It comes from the RES. They would pay that to the school district.
And while I'm paying the money, why are they paying the cost?
Well, they're getting to pay fewer taxes, fewer dollars by getting an tax abatement agreement. Yes, ma'am? But the money that pay, goes to the school district, the money that comes to the county is paid by RES for the project. And, you know, there was some talk about the federal government reimbursing these projects. There is no reimbursement, per se. There's a tax credit, but there's no fresh money coming in. They're paying less tax than if that were not granted, but there's no additional monies coming in. Yes, sir?
What's the appreciation rate on the solar project?
Which, you have a statutory accelerated depreciation rate that depreciates eighty percent of the original capital cost in the first ten years. At the end of that ten-year period, it reaches the remaining twenty percent, does not depreciate further. On these projects, for example, on the Keys Hollow, there is an estimated seventeen point seven million dollars of eleventh year value, starting out with a capital value of a hundred and sixty million dollars. So by the end of ten years, the remaining taxable value, I'm sorry, was, I was reading the Weezer, is twenty-three million, six hundred and eighty thousand. It will stay taxable at that twenty percent. It won't depreciate further. So the county actually ends up making over the remaining twenty years on a thirty-year life expectancy, about three point six million in additional revenue that it would not otherwise receive without the project. A total over the thirty-year life of the ten years of the pilot payments and twenty years of the straight appraised value payments of about estimated five point five million dollars.
That's for all of them?
No, that's just on the Keys Hollow or the Cap Road. Over the, but, so the county would receive over the thirty-year life expectancy, about five point five million from Keys Hollow, about five point five from Clip Road, and about four point, little over, right at four point one from Weezer.
And, and those numbers do not include the taxes on the property?
Right.
It went from fifty-dollar ag value to whatever it is, four thousand, three thousand, five thousand?
The ag exemption usually runs between ninety to ninety-five percent of the appraised value. So there's going to be an appreciable sum of money, but it would not be on the entire acreage within the zone. It would only be on the acreage that has the improvement. Yes, sir?
What's the status of Tulsa?
Both Tulsa and Peregrine have asked for an additional extension of time, and I think they're moving some dirt, didn't you not say?
They're moving, they're moving dirt at Peregrine right now. And a company called by the name of NG, E-N-G-I-E, has purchased the Tulsa, and they're anxious to get going.
Does that require assistance in contract? Is it, is it like that, so, or is it like we granted last year?
At the, if they were not able to commence, the county could pull the plug, or could, if it did its own option, agree to a further extension. Yes, sir? And they could ask for a deferral payment. They could ask to renegotiate terms. They're not bound necessarily if they don't satisfy the contract terms. Any other questions? Any commissioners or...
I have no questions.
So the Tulsa project is, they're over their contract this month, aren't they? Their three-year contract?
It's been sold. The deal's done. It's finished. It's not under contract.
It's not under contract anymore?
No, they, they bought it.
Yeah, but, I mean, the, our contract with the, the abatement contract?
Yes, sir. Uh, I would have to look at what their timeline was. They did ask for an extension of time. I just don't know when that expires.
We granted them the first extension, the second one we'll have to talk about.
Thank you very much. Oh, there are representatives from RES here who could perhaps answer any other questions. Stephen, were you going to make that presentation?
So just, just to be clear, the property, the dirt, is not abated in any way, shape or form. So, and there's a three-year rollback. It's that thing we never think about when we claim ag, but there is a three-year rollback, and the taxes are two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars a year on that piece of property, times three, so that'll be a lump sum check.
The, I was looking at, after the twenty years, that three...
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, Jack.
After the ten years, and we get, they're going to pay us a twenty percent for the remaining twenty years?
We're going to, just to simplify, we're going to require, we're going to receive the same amount of payments for a twenty-year period.
No, ten years.
I thought you asked about if, is it going to go in the...
After the ten-year period...
It continues on.
No, they, Mr. Bass said, then they were going to give twenty percent of the value.
I have the schedule here.
That's the floor, that's appreciated, that's the little... Appreciated value in ten years. Twenty percent is left, and they're going to pay tax on that twenty percent value for the next...
And total value, for the twenty percent value, it would have been twenty-seven billion for the Weezer, about twenty-three or twenty-four million. That had, we related, what we had back then, to that hundred and seventy percent value remaining in the project.
So you said it would be three point six million dollars over the ten-year period?
Right.
And that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per year if we get that...
Are you going to run through those numbers?
Yeah, I've got it.
There may be most of your questions about that, depending on your...
Go on, press the numbers, and check.
Do you all have any, uh, company, this company that you're talking about? Where did they, is it American or foreign? Isn't it all like foreign country, not American?
Yeah.
Can you put it out there?
I can answer that. It, I got a phone call from the UK the other day. And they said their company is based in the UK.
You're not English?
Yes, ma'am.
So this is a Canadian company? That's all up here, they can imagine, uh, is the back of the car, what's going on? How far do you care if I'm used to it? You can use that.
You get that call?
I'll be coming.
Oh, yeah?
Man, I don't drink whiskey, man.
I don't want whiskey, right?
Shut up. Okay. This is, this is going to be difficult, dude.
Judge. I've, I've done a lot of homework.
You know what I'm catching on? I'm sorry, I didn't...
Judge, can I ask one question quick? Question out of the board, of the company. You mentioned a company that has NG.
NG bought Tulsa. They paid for it.
NG uses the, they're operating, they own the plant, they work for letter of the contract. They are from France. You're correct, they're the largest... We are doing, like, we're doing, we're doing a warm, tough, it's only here, they have a bad, it's all in the way.
Yes, sir.
You need to really think about it.
But, but here's the deal. They're paying in dollars, and second of all, we don't choose who comes to the table. All we can do is set it. Would I prefer that it was a homespun group out of Goliad, Texas, where everybody put their money together? I absolutely, absolutely would, sir.
So NG's own company are very short on, they turn over food. This is not a, you're going to judge somebody's car to lose. After their job, it's, and they're going to, they're invested, and they're going to afford it, they're going to operate, and then they operate sort of weird, but they're all, and suddenly you've got somebody who, what happened to them?
Well, there's a, well, the tax abatement would go away because if nobody was operating it, but we have a bond in place for decommissioning.
Is there a second to this?
I'm sorry, I can't do it.
With all your return, you're going to get that operation now?
You have to be pretty close to it when you're speaking.
We'll have the money that we got, and that's all I know to tell you. I'm not going into a business deal hoping that someone will stay in business or go out of business. I'm assuming they're going to stay in business. I don't have any way of knowing that, sir. I don't have any way of knowing. We don't choose the companies that come to the table, but we try to make our contracts tight enough that everyone is mostly happy. I mean, I don't know, if you know someone that wants to come do solar or start a giant business in Goliad, we'd love to talk to them. As, as Sheriff Boyd said two months ago, we would all rather be looking at cows than solar panels. There's no question about that, but cows don't pay the kind of money that we're talking about. The first gentleman that was up today wanted to know why he couldn't get his half of the road paid. The simple answer, we don't have any money. And in my elementary school math, it looks like we're going to get about nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, the first year, and that'll continue for twenty years, and that's a tenth of our budget. And I believe all these commissioners and any of the elected officials that have to make do would tell you that that's welcome, that's welcome money. We're not selling our soul. We're looking at something. No one's made any decision. That's the reason I had a town hall meeting, invited everyone. That's the reason we're having a public hearing here to give people like yourself the opportunity to speak up, and we urge everyone to do that. Go ahead, sir.
Sure. Judge, commissioners, thank you for the time. My name's Stephen Van Dyke. I'm a tax consultant with Cummings Westlake. I'm helping RES kind of navigate the three thirteen and three twelve processes. Today, I'll be going over all three projects at once, just due to not being repetitive. We're going to do introductions, who is RES, project overview, project benefits, and then community comments.
Speak up.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Who is RES? The world's largest independently-owned renewable energy company. RES stands for Renewal, Renewable Energy Systems. They have operations in all of North America, Europe, and Australia. They have about three thousand employees across the world. They develop, construct, and operate renewable projects, wind, solar, storage, along with transmission and distribution. These are the projects that they have developed and constructed in the US and in Canada. As you can see, the largest portion of their projects are based in Texas, constructing almost fifty-two hundred megawatts of solar, wind, and storage. This is a map of the projects that they have constructed in Texas. The closest ones you can see were developed in Brazoria and Bear County. They have a lot amongst the, the northwest and the plains and Amarillo, but they're kind of expanding down here due to the congestion of the lines. Now I'll get into the project overviews. The three projects that we're looking at are Keys Hollow, Clip Road, and Weezer. Keys Hollow and Clip Road are both in their early stages. They're located about seven miles southwest of Goliad, and they'll both be around two hundred megawatts with, with BES. BES is short for battery energy storage. As you can see, these are smaller maps of Weezer. I think Weezer's located up on the north side off one eighty-three, and then Clip Road and Keys Hollow are very close to each other down on the south side off fifty-nine. Keys Hollow will be a two hundred megawatt solar project developed by RES. It'll be on about four thousand acres. Like I said, it was located about seven miles south. The boundaries for that are Clip Road on the north side and twenty-four forty-one on the east side. If built, it is expected to generate about forty-four, enough energy for, for forty-four thousand homes, and they're looking to start construction early in twenty twenty-five. Clip Road is very similar. It's only on two thousand acres, but again, same size, same area, same forty-four thousand homes, and it will begin, begin construction around early twenty twenty-five also, along with Keys Hollow. Weezer is a hundred and fifty megawatt solar project that is located by one eighty-three and State Highway one nineteen. It is a smaller project than the others, so it's expected to generate electricity for about thirty-three thousand homes, and it will begin construction also in early twenty On these projects, these are the items that you'll be seeing out there. PV modules, power stations, above and below grade DC electrical cable, buried medium voltage electrical cable, and O and M building, operations and maintenance, where the, the people will be housed, substation and switchyard, gravel access roads, fences, gates, and also the battery energy storage systems are best. The project benefits. In general, the, the solar project lifecycle consists of four distinct phases: development, construction, operations, and decommissioning. It is during the development phase where the key project components are defined and feasibility and economics are assessed. There are several key milestones that must be met before a solar project can proceed from the development to construction. Site control and project due diligence, which secures the land and establishes the constraints. Project design, permitting, and tax incentives, where we are now. It defines the project construction and operation costs. Then, the next would be interconnection, which outlines the cost and conditions under which the project can interconnect. Power offtake. This is based on the cost input set by the power price. The project can, contracts, project contracts power produced by the facility with a utility or corporate entity. This is the biggest part of everything, is they, once they get the abatements and everything, they figure out how much it's going to cost to produce power, then they take it to the market. And if they've got a project that does not have abatements compared to a project that does have abatements even within the county or surrounding counties, their cost of power is going to be higher than the person with abatements. So this is where it is crucial that they try to get these type of incentives so that they can offer the low... So this is where it is crucial that they try to get these type of incentives so that they can offer the lowest price when they go to financing. Project financing secures the investment for construction and long-term ownership of the project. Like I just said, projects that have secured tax abatements have a significant market advantage in attracting project investment, realizing projected investor returns, and therefore proceeding to construction. Projects constitute a significant investment to the local community. All three projects could be about five hundred million dollars and allow for sustainable, long-term revenue to applicable taxing jurisdictions, including the county, the school, San Antonio River Authority, and the Goliad County Groundwater Conservation District. Due to the heavy property tax burdens of the state of Texas, among the highest in the nation, chapter three twelve abatement mechanisms have been utilized by many local jurisdictions across the state to attract new investment. They are short-lived but have significant immediate and future impact. Direct impacts, long-term increase in tax revenue base, job opportunities in the community during the construction phase and long-term operation phase of the project. Indirect impacts, higher spending in the community induced by project workforce and job support through the indirect supply chain purchases. Tax revenue comparison. This is kind of a broad overview of the current status versus a solar project coming by. Right now, the current status, the land is under ag exemption, bless you. The tax assessed on the personal property, there is no personal property out there, so there is no increased revenue or increased value. And tax assessed on the land is taxed at the agricultural ag exemption, which is about five percent of its hundred percent market value. If the project comes, which would be the solar, it would be taxed by a pilot payment for years one through ten and be fully taxed years eleven through thirty. On the land, there would be a three-year tax rollback paid in year one of the project life due to the removal of land from agricultural exemption, then it'd be fully taxed on the land for the duration of the project. And that would be for the full thirty years. Tax revenue for the first ten years is about six point one, or for the first ten years is about six point one million dollars. The full tax years eleven through thirty would be almost thirteen million dollars just for the personal property. And then for the land, the estimated one-year rollback, and this is for all three projects, is about eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And then the estimated year tax on land would be about seven point eight million dollars for a total of about eight point seven million. All of that combined is almost twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars. This goes into each project on its own. So Keys Hollow, the pilot payment, the two point two million dollars is actually all ten years, so you guys will be getting about two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year. And then years eleven through thirty will be about two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year. And that will be constant because it is at the twenty-year floor, which is necessitated by the state. The estimated ag rollback that I've come up with using the twenty twenty-two values and no, you know, I've, I've kept the tax rate the same, I'm coming up with four hundred thousand dollars for Keys Hollow. And then the estimated land tax would be about three point six million dollars over the thirty years or an extra hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars a year. In total, all of that is ten point nine million. In the first year for Keys Hollow, you guys should be getting about six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars because that includes the four hundred thousand dollars of ag rollback. And then after that, there will be three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars a year for Keys Hollow, which includes the land and the pilot payment. There also is the fifteen thousand dollar contribution that's done to the fire department, that's fifteen hundred dollars a year for ten years for all three projects. For Clip Road, it's very similar because the sizes are the same and so are the, the terms of the agreement. But it'll be two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year, it'll, then the two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year for eleven through thirty. On the land, the two hundred and sixteen thousand will be the estimated ag rollback because it's got less acreage, it's only about two thousand acres. And then the estimated tax is about two million dollars over the thirty years, which is about sixty-five thousand dollars a year. In total, that first year will be about five hundred and four thousand, including the ag rollback, and the year two will be about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Weezer is a smaller project. And so it'll be a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars a year for a total of one point six million over the ten. And then years eleven through thirty, you'll be getting about hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year. And then for the estimated tax rollback, you'll be getting two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And then two point two million over the thirty years, which is about seventy-five thousand dollars. For Weezer, the first year payment should be about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, including the two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollar estimated tax rollback. And then every year after that will be two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. In total, that first year payment should be about almost one point seven million dollars. After that, all three projects will be paying about eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars a year in pilot payments. I'm sorry, that includes the land. The total pilot payment would be six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars with the remainder being the increased taxes on the land. Are there any questions on those numbers? I know I kind of ran through them, but good. This kind of goes back to the comments that were raised by the community back at the town hall and other, I know that the commissioners have seen their response. I can go through these, or if you guys want me to move on, I can, I can do as the commissioners would like.
I have a question.
Sure.
In the agreement, there'll be no act of alarm taxes paid, only a pilot payment.
Correct.
And there'll be another pilot payment for the battery storage if there is such, so we could get a hundred and thirty-five, approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars here for the, for the two and a hundred thousand dollars for one and whatever the pilot would be for the battery.
So the numbers that I gave, the, for the two two hundred megawatt projects where the keys and the clip, they are estimating that they'll have a hundred megawatts of battery storage. So it's eight hundred and ninety-five dollars a megawatt for two hundred megawatts plus a hundred megawatts times four forty-seven, four fifty. And I have, my projections are with them building both the two hundred and the one hundred. Both the battery and the solar. So we have two hundred megawatts times nine hundred thousand would be about a hundred and eighty grand. And then the one hundred times the four four seven would be about forty-four thousand dollars for a total of two twenty-three. There were questions about storm water management. During the development phase, each project will complete a thorough hydrologic and hydraulic analysis of the site. The project will design, will design effective storm water management systems to ensure that the post-development scenario matches the pre-development conditions. During construction, pollutant discharges to the surface waters are regulated by the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit Program. Prior to the start of the construction, projects will develop a storm water pollution prevention plan and obtain a TPDES Construction General Permit from TCUQ. The SWIP III outlines best management practices and during, during and post-construction to meet applicable water quality standards and minimize the pollutants in the discharge. Project sites will be revegetated with native low-growth seed mix. This allows for proper soil stabilization and stabilization and effective long-term erosion control and water quality management. Vegetative screening, RES strives to be a good neighbor and a valuable member of every community where our projects are located. RES recognized the communities concerned around visual impacts associated with the Weezer solar project site due to its relative proximity to several existing residences. RES proposes to mitigate this impact by installing a row of trees and/or shrubs as a screening measure in locations directly across from the residence along Albrecht Road and FM nineteen sixty-one, as evidenced by the yellow diamonds on the map. As part of the landscape design, RES will evaluate the existing vegetative cover and supplement it with native tree and/or shrub species to create an effective visual barrier. A landscape plan will be developed at the time of the final project design. Fencing. Vegetative screening is an effective screening mechanism utilized by RES and other developers across the US as it effectively breaks up the view shed. If desired, vegetative screening can further be supplemented by a colored, treated fence screen to mitigate the project's impacts. Setbacks. The project will apply setbacks from property lines and locations adjoining effective residences to create a distance between the project and the residences.
How, how big would that setback be coming to you?
Well, right now, our initial design shows at, at a minimum, our design as it currently stands, shows at least a hundred feet setback from those existing view planes.
Battery storage, fire prevention. Two main types of lithium ion battery chemistries, unlike lead acid or flow batteries, lithium ion battery cells do not spill or release electrolytes or other liquids. The battery energy storage system facility will be designed, tested, and operated in accordance with established industry standards and practices and deploy a wide range of techniques to minimize the risk of fire at the facility. Effective fire prevention and mitigation techniques will be realized through chemistry selection, design, battery inspection, testing, monitoring, and active control using early warning smart sensors, fires, and fire suppression technologies. Projects will develop an emergency response plan and periodically train fire departments and first responders. Several available fire suppression and fire propagation prevention mechanisms can be utilized to control and manage fire in the event of failure. Automatic clean agent fire suppression, which releases condensed aerosols as agents to interact with and extinguish the fire. Gas detection activation and mechanical ventilation. If gases detected within the container, mechanical ventilation valves are opened and it releases any gas buildup during the overheating and fire. Then dry piping, water is supplied by a fire apparatus contained with spill prevention material.
Can I ask a question real quick? Okay, so that's basically the battery systems that are enclosed inside the building.
Yeah, like the top picture.
Fire suppression outside, the grass around the panels, any of that kind of stuff available?
Sorry, what was the question?
If we're, if we're in a drought and the grass starts burning because it's hot over there, is there any fire suppression?
Around the module?
Around the, the panels, solar panels, the panels.
There is not a, a fire suppression around the solar modules, no.
I have a question.
Sure.
Which, which one of those fire suppressions, you're going to use all three, a combination of all three of those or just one of those?
It depends, it depends on the specific use case for the project. So we specifically select batteries on the needs of the project, the need for recharge discharge. And that will also drive the applicable and adequate suppression technologies that will be incorporated into the enclosure and the battery system.
So the batteries will be enclosed in that enclosure, like you get up on the top picture, is that right?
Correct.
The gases, it says there are released gases when they're built up, what gases will come out?
Again, that is dependent on the type of battery. And as part of the battery design, there is specific requirements to test the gas that is emitted in the case of a fire event. So that will be defined when the project battery is specifically selected for the use case at the site.
How can you really understand what you're saying, what type of gases can be released if they're all there?
Again, those will be defined at a later point, when the battery is selected for the specific use case.
So different batteries could alter the gases, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so we do specific lab testing. The manufacturers conduct this and as part of the testing in a controlled lab environment, they establish the type of gas that is emitted in the case of a fire event. Such that the design can then effectively incorporate mitigation measures to address a potential concern.
And you know the cars and their electrical managers, whether they're managed by burning wood? And they said they cannot put out by normal water? If you're making a bar for fifteen hundred dollars a year, how are they going to come up with something that's likely to fire with only fifteen hundred dollars a year? They can't use water on that.
So that's why the enclosure will be specifically designed to contain these mechanisms to address a concern, right? So there are aerosols that can be injected into the container to suppress potential fires. There are other ways, other than water, through which this fire can be mitigated. And that will be addressed as part of the enclosure and the project.
Would that apply to the panels also?
The panels don't.
The bar on the panels, water, would that apply to chemical on that also and the chemicals in the bar?
No, we do not, there are no gas, no gas emissions coming from the panels themselves.
And the chemicals that can be used, what processes we love, the chemical we use, we could have our.
So if there is a occurrence of a fire event and the need for aerosols, and if that in fact is deemed to be the appropriate mitigation for the fire, for that design, for that use case at the site, then that would be handled through hazmat material. That would be applied to absorb any, any of those materials and that would be contained to that specific facility. So not only the batteries are they contained in a container, a steel container, but there's also operational emergency response instructions that will inform how fire is mitigated.
Have you ever heard of nitrotrifluoride? Ma'am, have you ever heard of nitrotrifluoride?
Uh, what's your point?
Uh, it's, occurs in solar panels, okay? And it's very toxic.
Well, we, you're not.
And it can be released. It's not as much as the nitrogen we're concerned about, it's the fluoride. Yes, it can be released and it can be, it's a gas.
Alonso, what type of community education with the volunteer fire department need to get equipped?
If I could address that. As part of the, there's a misunderstanding about the charitable donation of fifteen hundred dollars. That's a charitable donation. A second section of the agreement says that the owner, RES, agrees to annually provide onsite training to county and volunteer fire department key responders with respect to the owner's emergency response plan. The project will be designed to meet or exceed industry standards for fire suppression and mitigation. Any specialized equipment recognized in established industry standards and that is necessary to fight fire originating with the project's solar or battery storage equipment will be maintained by the owner. And in accordance with the emergency response plan, provided for the use of any responding fire, volunteer fire department responding to a fire event. Should the need arise, in accordance with the owner's emergency response plan, owner will reimburse the responding fire departments for actual documented cost incurred in responding to a fire emergency caused by the project's equipment. And not by natural causes such as lightning at the project. So the, any specialized equipment will be purchased by RES and maintained onsite and made available to find any responding fire departments. So it's not just the fifteen hundred. I'm sorry? I presume so, yes. Yes, sir. Well, any, any new acquiring entity, any new acquiring entity has to step into RES's shoes. So they will assume all of the responsibilities that RES has under the agreement. Well, see, that's part of the problem, you're used to the oil company screwing you around. That doesn't necessarily mean that these folks will.
Could I ask how much your bond is going to be in terms of, how much you've got in the bond, how much is the bond?
The bond that's required is on the road use agreement, it's a hundred thousand dollars cash to be replenished as drawn down. That's on the road use agreement. It's a, it's a refund, a replenishable fund, so if it draws more than that, they have to refund it back up to that level.
What if the company goes bankrupt during that time? When their bond is gone, down, then there's a bank.
There is a statute that requires solar entities to fund a remediation account. There is a statute that requires solar entities to fund a remediation account so that it, should the business go under, there's a funded account to remediate the project ground back to its original state. That's both by statute and by our agreement and by our local guidelines. I'm sorry, I can't. A lot of those will be, there is under section 3.4 of our agreement. And again, we're talking about an abatement agreement. We haven't jumped over the hoop of the zone creation yet, but some. There would have a certain list of the permits and the studies that would have to be completed and all of that would be provided forty-five days prior to commencement of operations.
But what do you do with the area?
Yes, excuse me. Well, they're not obligated to do that until, until they reach, if actually gonna build the project. And then that would have to be presented to the court, yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Let's, let's move to the presentation just a little bit. So if you need to ask your question, go ahead.
Wanna go back to the batteries? I don't think, you know, you need like, how big are these batteries? How much do they weigh? Are they a dry sealed batteries? What is the statistics on them? What is their lifespan? How often do you have to change them? The maintenance? What's the statistics on them cracking and leaking and exploding? You got any of that? Can you give us some of that information?
Sure, yeah, so. Can you hear me okay? So these batteries have a life of about fifteen years. They don't leak. They're lithium ion batteries, which do not leak. There are other types of batteries such as flow batteries that have the potential to leak in certain conditions. We do not propose to utilize those batteries. We will use lithium ion batteries, which do not leak. In addition, these batteries will be monitored twenty-four seven through a battery management system. The battery management system monitors every cell within the battery container for voltage, heat, and overall cell health such that if there is a spec that is out of norm, this battery can be automatically electrically isolated to, to avoid an issue. In addition, we have onsite staff that can be dispatched to, again, electrically assess the battery and take further action as warranted by the conditions. So there is a view, a real-time view into the health of the battery so that the batteries operate as they were designed. And if there is an element that's out of spec, action can be taken.
I have a question on the proposed agreement. What, what kind of, what kind of buffer zone has been put into the agreement? If I, if the first is property next to one of these farms, as we know, apparently these real subsidies are popping up all around the county. And, and, and these properties are selling for ten thousand dollars an acre in ten acres block. And, and people are putting the three, four hundred dollars on hold for that. Now, if there's not a buffer on these farms, that base property value is gonna go down to paying value, 'cause that's all it's gonna be worth. So is there a buffer zone written into the contract or into the protocol? To protect the adjacent landowners, well, then, then beware, that's, that is a huge oversight to not have a buffer zone because that, all of our properties now are appraised around fifty-five hundred dollars a acre. Yes, we already pay the taxes on the ag data. But people's next condition to these farms will not have a buffer zone to, to.
Sir. Both the University of Texas and Texas A&amp;M University have conducted studies to determine whether or not wind and solar projects have a negative impact on property values. Neither of those studies has demonstrated any hard data to show that there's been a reduction in property values as a result of the proximity to an alternate energy installation. Those are the best two flagship universities in the, in the state of Texas. I've heard real estate agents and landowners say that they think, they fear that their property values will decline. I've been doing these projects for about twenty years now and just looking at the appraised values, I've, I've not seen any evidence of it and the studies haven't shown any evidence. I understand your fears about it, but so far the data doesn't bear that out. I'm sorry?
The property section itself, you can say that, you would literally clap for all the properties that are sold.
Well, I don't know. I don't have rural property, but I'm just saying that the studies have not shown a, a negative impact by these projects. That goes to the, there's a fifteen, there's a fifteen hundred dollar per year grant to the nearest volunteer fire department to the project. Fifteen hundred per project. Well, that's a charitable contribution. That, again, that's not counting the equipment that's being provided by, and the training that's being provided. It's, that's just a charitable donation to that volunteer fire department. I'm sorry, the what? Well, we're already have negotiated that for this, these projects at seventy percent. The original two projects got the same seventy percent. So it was an effort to try to be consistent with similar type projects. Well, it's a ten-year tax abatement and then I believe the contract says that they will stay in business for at least fifteen years thereafter. Well, ten plus fifteen is twenty-five, so yes, there is a five-year gap there, but it. Again, there is a remediation provision that requires the property to be returned to its original state. That's funded, but as far as, is there a guarantee, absolute? There's no guarantee that we'll even wake up in the morning. No, there's no guarantee, absolute guarantee that. We have a fifteen-year commitment after the abatement period, so we have a twenty-five year commitment. And these companies are profitable. I expect there will be more of them. Can I guarantee absolutely that every project? There is a recapture provision during the ten years of abatement. I wasn't here from, at that time, I don't know.
There is no guarantee from Coletto Creek. If they go bankrupt, they go bankrupt.
I can't speak to Coletto Creek. I can tell you that in these particular agreements, there's.
Yes, sir.
I think the gentleman's point is well-taken. If it does go bankrupt, those assets will be sold off. And they will be sold off cheaper than, but the, the new owner will have to step into the shoes of this agreement and live up to the shoe, the terms of this agreement. I don't have much fear that this two hundred, one hundred and sixty million dollar project will lay out there dormant. No, sir, I don't.
Mr. Gill, did he answer your question about the fire stuff? Okay.
Decommissioning. Decommissioning obligations in Texas governed by Senate Bill 760, which went into effect September first of 2021, incorporated in the provisions of each project lease include removal of the solar facilities from the project site, removal of the foundations and cable to a depth of three feet, site restoration, and additional removal of and restoration requirements as requested by landlord roads and rocks. So this is actually signed a bill that the state has put that they have to adhere to. It's not, you know, just a contract. Decommissioning obligations secured by a removal bond under the lease and then during operations, projects will develop a site-specific decommissioning plan. Individual components will be removed from the site and recycled or repurposed off-site. Do temperature increases as a result of solar power installations? Several studies have been completed with varied assumptions and findings. Some have found a cooling effect in the areas surrounding the array. Other studies have shown that a slight heat island effect, while both effects are described as minimal, reseeding and vegetation are said to help mitigate potential impacts associated with the project. No measurable impact is anticipated to be felt outside of the project fence. Do heavy metals leach from solar panels and contaminate the environment? While modules do contain trace heavy elements, the encasement has been proven to withstand degradation and extreme weather events such as heat, cold, precipitation, hailstorms, and hurricane-force winds. Studies, independent testing, and associated evidence do not indicate a public health threat from solar modules to the environment. Do electromagnetic fields from the facility cause illness? Electric and magnetic fields result from voltage and current respectively. As an electric power generator, solar facilities produce EMF. EMF has been studied since the late seventies by the U.S. and international organizations. Reports have concluded that while EMF was generally higher in the vicinity of the inverters and transformers, the fields measured were negligible compared to occupational exposure thresholds and evidence does not show that exposure to these fields present a human health hazard. Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners or judge? Is that better?
So part, part of the, I'm not sure what you call it, so I'll back up a bit. But when we were investigating where to, where to locate new sites, we still, we stayed out of West Texas because of the transmission constraints that Stephen had mentioned. Southern Texas, Goliad in particular, is quite close to load zones, San Antonio, Austin, and Houston, which provide a, you know, that, that is effectively where most of the energy is bought. And, you know, we, we did prospect in several counties and we have, we have projects in other counties as well, so it isn't solely Goliad where we're looking, but thus far we've found, you know, willing landowners and welcoming community. So that's part of the reason why we're, we're here in Goliad. So RES is, might answer a few questions, actually. So RES does not own the projects. We are a developer and constructor. And so we have developed projects and constructed projects in the slides here. We do. No, we don't, there's, no. Yes, yeah. So we have, did you say a hundred foot setback from the property line? We don't believe that, that, we don't believe that well will be contaminated. Do you know how far we are, how far we have panels from that, from the house in Albright?
Are you located on the north side?
Yeah. So are you on this?
No. You're on the east. Okay. So on the east side, I believe that you mentioned a comment during the town hall where you were directly, were very close to the property line and we have taken specific care to set back the panels in that location. Our initial design had them closer to that property line. We have intentionally, based on your feedback, set it back to create additional distance in that location for you. It's more than a hundred feet in that location. I believe in that location, it's two hundred feet. Yeah, no, that's, it's been addressed and that, that, those panels in that location have been set back in our design, but, yeah. So as part of our design, we So as part of our design, um, we have come in, and we have conducted a number of studies that have shown what the area that is buildable actually is. We are very careful about avoiding environmentally sensitive areas. We don't want to impact creeks. We don't want to impact floodplain, and so we're keeping our project intentionally out of these sensitive areas to avoid an adverse impact that would be undesirable. So to that end, we are, we have had to cut a significant portion of the project site out of the project buildable area. We have cited our panels, uh, to the maximum extent, taking into account existing residences and setting those back. So we are intentionally, uh, creating distance between existing residences and the project to the extent that this site allows for it. Right? This, this particular property, as I'm sure you're aware, has a creek going right through the middle, so it's not feasible for us to locate the project right in the center of the site. But we are still taking that into consideration, recognizing that there are residents in the vicinity of this project, and we are intentionally setting it back, um, to avoid or create a distance and, um, avoid a visual impact.
I have another question. Um, I want to, if, if the tax rate is approved, when can we start doing that plan? If we're building a, um, project, right, and the project is, right, now working out this, to start in twenty twenty-five? Isn't it not until we're actually built and started?
The first, the first tax year will be twenty twenty-six, so the pilot thing will be due at the end of twenty twenty-six.
And as long as, like, Rick said, community growth and, and benefits are coming. If you're only gonna have one to two people, unless they have three kids, how is that gonna affect us as far as the management, if we're being comfortable? If that's the job, our benefit?
We're not for the jobs?
Well, if there's dollars, you know, there's seven to five, if it's on the fly, it's talking about benefits of our economy. It's talking about the outcome, about who controls our economy because of the jobs that exist. How is that, um, actually, if we have one to two jobs?
So during the construction term, um, there will be a number of jobs created, and Stephen had talked about the impacts to the community as a result of those added jobs. During operations, that's actually one of the benefits of the solar farms, is once they're constructed, they really, they do employ, uh, several employees. However, uh, they don't require any county services in return. So you don't have the added impact of road usage or traffic or anything like that. It's a quiet neighbor and really a generator of tax revenue once in the ground and constructed.
Is this a plan that you believe that you're gonna implement in, um, or are we gonna come forth and make in that?
There will be employees, uh, that operate these facilities, and that, that will be a benefit of, of the project. The largest benefit of employees coming in and constructing the project will take place during the construction phase of the projects.
Is this our, is it, um, there is a deal?
So RES does, is required through our tax abatement agreement to, uh, hold job fairs and source local labor to the extent that qualified local, local labor exists.
I know you already answered a little bit. If you guys are gonna use the fire department, are you going to give it to the fire department?
Going, go on.
Is this something else that they mentioned on fire, or is it the fire department?
So, so this will be incorporated into the design of the facility. So the...
If you have access to the facility, can I ask you something?
So there is, uh...
I know, I know the fire department's also, I have, uh, actually, if you guys have provided, uh, or if you have...
Will provide anything that's required, whether, you know, whether that has my material or other items, we will have that stored on-site.
Like, oh, I'll...
Probably in an O and M building, uh, within the facility.
All right, if we can, uh... I think all the bases have been covered in the public hearing. I need to emphasize that no decisions have been made here. We are, it's incumbent upon us to look at every project that comes to us, and that's what we're doing. I appreciate y'all being here. I do. So what I would like to do, you know, the elephant in the room is, the really big elephant in the room is, is that no one's saying anything about Clip Road or the Key Hollow. The problem is that this one at Weezer is built in the midst of a bunch of people. We didn't design the project. We haven't made a decision on it. We have to get the input so we can know what the issues are, which I think that's what we're doing. We had a public hearing initially, or a town hall initially out at the auditorium, and now we're giving everybody another go-around. But listen to me when I tell you, no one's made a decision here. We have to listen to all the people that come to our county because we are church mice, and no one disputes that. So what I'd like to do is move into the, uh, Keys Hollow and, and the Clip Road, and let's see what we want to do out there, because I feel a need to say that when we did the one on eight eighty-three, and when we did the one way out on twenty-four forty-one, there was like three people in this room, and we had the same presentation, and we had the same issues, but the one at Weezer is built, or proposed to be inbuilt, in the midst of all where all y'all live. And if I was, if I lived where Ms. Hoff lived, I'd probably be here too. But we have to listen. That's our job. You wouldn't want us to make decisions without listening, would you? I don't think so.
Do y'all realize that there is a solar farm difference?
I can't hear you, Jack. I'm sorry.
Do y'all realize that there are solar farm differences? They're not operators? The gentleman right there told us, they don't operate these. They just build them, and then they flip them, sell them to somebody else.
Well, so, just to be clear, so we develop and we construct, and ideally, we are the operator in the project. So the operation remains through the life of the project. That decision is dependent on an order through Congress. We are not...
So we're not dealing with the operator? We just deal with...
Okay, so with a bond, with a bond and a solid contract...
A hundred thousand dollar bond? That's...
I don't know, I don't know that that's gonna be the bond that we use. Everything's negotiable until the ink's on the paper. Right? We're here doing the best we can to try to increase the revenue into this county so that man there can have his end of the road fixed. And if you ask Kenneth why he didn't fix it, it's not because he didn't like that man, it's because he didn't have the money to fix it. We're running on fumes. So let's look at Clip Road, and let's look at Key Hollow, and then we'll move to Weezer. Is that fair? I think it is. All right, let me find my glasses. Go ahead, Vaughn.
First order of business is to create the reinvestment zone so that you can then consider whether you want to grant tax abatement. First, the project, uh, would be creation of zones known as Key Hollow and Clip Road. There's one zone, but there will be two projects built within the one zone.
Mr. Bass, are we in our regular meeting, or are we still in the public?
I need to, need to close the public hearing, and we're about to move back into our regular session of Commissioners' Court. Need a motion to do that, please? Lonzo?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're back in our regular meeting now.
So you have, uh, before you, an application that I assume you've all seen that lays out where the Clip Road, Keys Hollow projects will be built, attached to an order, creating a zone, is a map of that area and the, uh, parcels that are included within that, uh, area. The Keys Hollow, Clip Road reinvestment zone has a total acreage of about fourteen thousand acres. Again, as I think the RES PowerPoint showed us, only about four thousand acres would be involved in the occupied by panels in the Keys Hollow, and a little over two thousand acres in Weezer. But again, the abatement would only go to the improvements, the solar panels, would not affect the underlying land that does not have panels on it. The appraised value, uh, of that land today at full value is thirty-three million dollars, but you're only collecting on all of that land about five hundred seventy thousand dollars. So you're gonna recover, if you were to go forward with the abatement, just on the rollback, you'd be recovering, uh, at least that much, uh, from the rollback of those four thousand and two thousand acres. You would continue to levy just regular ad valorem tax with the ag exemption on the balance. So the creation of the zone is the first order of business. Does anybody have questions about the zone itself?
You're on the Key Hollow?
Key Hollow, Clip Road. It's a single zone. Both projects would be built within that single zone.
So it's my understanding we have to, we have to create the reinvestment zone before we can go any farther with anything?
Yes, sir.
There's no obligations here. We just need to create it.
You're under no obligation to create the zone, but you can't go forward with consideration of tax abatement without creating the zone. So it's a, it's a prerequisite to tax abatement.
Okay, I have a question. And then the fourteen thousand acres, only four thousand acres are going into the RES thing, but if somebody else wanted to come in with another totally different, they would also be able to experience an abatement?
Yes, sir.
Based on, on what we passed tonight? Somebody wanted to put in a, whatever, I don't, I don't, I don't know, but another totally different, they could be in the...
A gas compressor plant.
Okay, a gas compressor plant.
Somebody wants to put a gas compressor plant within this zone.
The fourteen thousand acres.
Right.
Yes, sir.
It wouldn't be solar because the capacity on the line will be used up at the, when, when they come in, there won't be capacity.
The way the rules in the, the law works, if a similar type project comes in, they get essentially similar terms. But if it's a totally different project, you get to negotiate another deal. And you can, within reason, you can negotiate different terms, but you, the basic terms, rate and percentage of abate probably would need to be the same if a solar project came in.
Yeah, but we're not talking about a solar project. If somebody else comes in, they would have to renegotiate, they, they, they would have to negotiate everything.
Everything, yeah.
Mr. Bass? That, but that, that's with the landowner's approval. They, if another one wanted to come in with that...
The landowner would have to agree for that entity to purchase land or lease land. Uh, yeah, that would be, the landowner would have the ultimate say-so over that.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and make a, uh, motion on the Keys Hollow, Clip Road project. I move to create a reinvestment zone to be known as Goliad County Reinvestment Zone, Keys Hollow and Clip Road, for the purposes of tax abatement to provide economic development within the county in accordance with Chapter three twelve of the Texas Tax Code. Said reinvestment zone to be located as described in the application by Keys Hollow, Clip Road Solar LLC. I'd like to get a motion to, get a second on that, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, sir.
So now we're on number eight. We're on agenda eight now?
That's right after seven.
Okay, I'm just, just making sure here. Okay, we're on eight now. Yeah. That's the road use agreement between Goliad County.
In anticipation that a project is built within the reinvestment zone, the county needs to have a road use agreement to protect the county from degradation of the county maintained roads, uh, within the project area. We have negotiated a road use agreement in anticipation of that. Keys Hollow, uh, Keys Hollow is a separate project from Clip Road. They're being built in the same zone. So there'll be a road use agreement for Keys Hollow Solar LLC, a road use agreement with Clip Road Solar LLC, and potentially a road use agreement with Weezer Solar LLC. They're all pretty much the same. The basic terms are that, uh, before the project construction phase starts, in conjunction with the commissioner and whose precinct, that project will be built, will meet with the project to inspect the current status of the roads, any roads that they anticipate will be used, ingress or egress. They will need to designate those roads that they decide they want to use for ingress and egress. These will be brought in on eighteen-wheeler. There will be a lot of eighteen-wheelers. They won't necessarily be overweight trucks, which is over eighty-four thousand pounds. The agreement, though, says that any truck that weighs more than fifty-four thousand pounds would have to follow those designated roads. So there would be a hundred thousand dollar cash bond that would be set up. The county would hold those bonds, and typically, all of the cost to armor up the road before the project starts would be based on that inspection. If the court, if the commissioner for that precinct and the company decide that a road is in need of armoring up for the anticipated traffic, the project will bear the cost of that armored additional base material, whatever. If during the construction of the road falls into disrepair, the county has to give notice to the other, to the entity that a road is in substandard conditions and needs to be repaired. They have a short period of time to come in and fix the road. If they fail to do that, the county can come in and fix the road and draw down your cash bond. To the extent you draw it down, they then have to replenish that fund, keep it at a hundred thousand dollars. Available funds, cash funds, so you don't have to go through a bonding company and all of that. The, uh, it has provisions for any cuts that are made under the road, the standards, the industry standards for that. There's gonna need to be casing of any electrical cables. All of that's provided for in the road use agreement. The, uh, rate of reimbursement on your drawdown would be based on FEMA rates, so those are typically fairly, uh, I won't say generous, but they're fairly adequate to reimburse the county for their costs. County would not be responsible for any, uh, roads that are not county maintained, that may be interior ranch roads that are built by, um, RES on the landowner's land. We don't assume any responsibility for maintaining those roads they're at. So only county maintained roads that are county maintained now will be turned back to us at the end of the project as county roads, in as good a condition as they were when the project started.
I'll have a question about that. What about if they're using state roads also, and they deteriorate the state roads?
Uh, the state roads, since I don't represent the state-
I, I know, I'm just, that's a question, though.
Typically, they have provisions in their truck permitting that they would pay the state a portion of their permit fee. And then they have to carry traditional two million dollar liability insurance for those vehicles to protect anybody that's injured by the project. We are granting to them the use of our roads subject to the terms and conditions of, of the road use agreement. They're public roads anyway, in the absence of an abatement agreement, we wouldn't have a potential to require a road use agreement, so they're giving us the road use agreement as an indication of good faith that they're willing to work with us on repairing and maintaining it. Any questions?
We'd like to raise, that, that hundred thousand don't get you very far on a, on a, on a section of road.
Well, it's not a one-time deal, though. It's a, it's a drawdown and then it is replenished.
You replenish it and keep it near a hundred thousand dollars?
Hundred thousand dollars today, about one mile rebuilding a road. So we understand that a hun- but if you were to try-
I mean, how much money is enough money? I don't know how many roads are gonna be used right now, but you have to be somewhat pragmatic about what you require. Okay?
Any other questions? So I need to make the motion to authorize and approve the road use agreement between Goliad County and Keys Hollow Solar to address possible degradation of any county maintained roads in the construction, operation, or maintenance of the Goliad County Reinvestment Zone, Keys Hollow and Cliff Road. Need a motion to approve, a second on that, please?
What we're gonna do is do each road agreement separately? Is that what he said over there?
Yes, sir, there's three separate road use agreements.
Mine says Keys Hollow, Keys Hollow and Cliff Road.
Yeah.
Well, the road use agreement is for each project.
Okay.
It's only, it's in one reinvestment zone.
Alright, this, this, uh, road use agreement will be only for Keys Hollow. Need a second.
Who, who made the motion?
I did.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And because we have one zone but two projects, we now need to consider the road use agreement for Cliff Road.
Right, I need to do, uh, Cliff Road.
Yes, sir. And it's the same agreement, same terms.
I move to authorize and approve the road use agreement between Goliad County and Cliff Road Solar to address possible degradation of any county maintained roads in the construction, operation, and maintenance of the Goliad County Reinvestment Zone, Cliff Road.
I just wanna make sure I understand this is now, we're now jumped to agenda item ten?
No.
No, we're still on number-
They just separated that one agenda item.
I need a second on that road use agreement, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The next, uh, the next item is the tax abatement for Keys Hollow Solar.
I'm sorry.
To provide economic development within Goliad County Reinvestment Zone, Keys Hollow, located within Goliad County in accordance with chapter three twelve of the Texas Tax Code, upon land described in the application and public notices required by law, for the construction of a solar power generating project of approximately two hundred megawatts capacity and an estimated cost of a hundred and sixty million dollars.
The tax abatement agreement that we've negotiated with Key Hollow Solar LLC provides that they would build up to two hundred megawatts with a guarantee or a minimum installation of no, not less than one hundred and fifty megawatts, that's generating capacity.
I need to interrupt myself here.
Yes, sir.
I don't think we've put the line in, the battery containment vessels to bed yet.
I'm sorry?
I don't think that we've put that to bed yet, and if we, if we approve this abatement without requiring that there's an impermeable liner underneath the batteries?
And a berm?
I'm sorry?
And a berm?
That would be part of the containment vessel, right. So, at what point do I need to include that?
Well-
While ago?
While ago, yes, sir. We've negotiated the terms without those. The battery storage is an optional matter, uh, in other words, they're not obligated to do the battery, but it would be something that would be part of the project if they chose to go forward.
So whether it's out of order or in order, I need to plug that in because I drink the water in this county too, and if there's a fire, I have concerns about it. I have concerns about what happens to the residue, uh, I have concerns about the design of the pit underneath it, five foot's way too far, two foot's a better number, and we wanna channel those, that fluid to the containment pond.
Now, of course, a lot of that will be provided in the design plan that ultimately comes before the court for approval, but if, if they get the permits that they're required to get, the ability of this court to require more is somewhat questionable, but I think we can make reasonable demands. But they have to get permitting from the state before they can build this project, and they've laid those things out that will be presented to you before they reach commercial operation state. So if there are continued concerns, that would be maybe the time to do it.
So to, we were, we were quoted that the construction of a two-acre containment berm would cost one point two million dollars, and I've been assured by people in the oil patch that it's a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. So I don't, I'm not sure where y'all's numbers are coming from, maybe from another state where there's a lot of paperwork.
But there are a lot of paperwork in the state, too.
I understand. So I just wanna be, I just wanna be sure that if Alonso and his guys go out there and fight a fire, and that, and that berm is full of water, that it's gonna channel to a containment pond, and there's gonna be adequate provisions made to get it into a vacuum truck and away from the scene. There's nobody in this room that does not want that.
Well, frankly, we have not negotiated those based upon the responses that we got from RES about the permitting requirements, that they agreed to have those inserted into the agreement. It was my understanding that those were satisfactory to, to at least the judge. I, I don't know what discussions you've had with the court.
We're just trying to keep our drinking water clean, and I think that's easily achievable.
Well, I understand, Judge, it's just if that's what we needed, I needed to be told that, we couldn't go forward. If that's part of it, I, I don't know if RES is willing to agree to that.
As a matter of fact, I had property owners from, one of the property owners offered to assist in building these berms, so this is a situation where there's some room in this deal, and building a, putting down a permeable liner inside of a berm, two acres, is not, it's not a deal breaker.
Well, candidly, that's the first time I've heard that is a requirement.
Well, I've been getting a lot of visits.
I'm sure you have, Judge, it's just if I, if I need to be told what the negotiation terms need to be, that's not been something I've been advised of.
Well-
Under those circumstances, I, I think ethically I need to withdraw from representation. I just have not been given the terms that the county-
This didn't come to my attention until Friday, and I just got the final paperwork today.
Well, no, I circulated it to you last week.
So I would, I don't think they're gonna object to it, you can answer.
Well.
May I ask you to consider additions to the tax abatement to help alleviate concern?
We just wanna protect our groundwater, and we just want to know that, as, as a matter of fact, then your responses here? One of the responses said that further, in addition of an impermeable liner introduces a significant added cost to the project for a scenario for that is unlikely to occur. In the event that it did, it is likely to be localized to a single best unit and manageable through the standard hazardous material containment practices, material absorbent material, material absorbent material application. And somewhere in here, it says that if we build an impermeable liner, it could affect the water sands and in a negative way, and there wouldn't be any moisture getting down to those water sands. So just being slow, I would tell you that y'all are already saying that the, the materials can get down into the water sands, so all I'm asking is for something to keep it out of the water sands.
So you're reading from the letter we sent?
I'm, I'm reading from a letter dated June sixteenth, and it's answers to the town hall questions.
Yeah, and like I said, we're happy that the tax abatement is a means for you all to, you know, file, where, you know, certain commitments can be put in, put in here, if it is, you know, we don't believe it's necessary, but if you want to do this, you're able for that or for any other concern, then this is, this is the time to do it. So this is the vehicle for you all to do. And, and, and so with regards to the abatement as it stands today, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, to-
All I'm asking for, all I'm asking for is some assurances that if there's a battery fire and you shoot foam on it and that doesn't work, and you hook up the dry piping and send water into it, that that water will go to a holding tank that collects all the hazardous material, it will be scooped up in a vacuum truck, and it'll go somewhere else. That's all I'm asking here.
You just want the extra my assurance?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You, you just want my verbal assurance of that?
Yes.
In, in writing?
Yeah. So to my point, what did you-
Yeah, I mean, that's, and I apologize for the confusion, I've never done this before, but I'll tell you that if I don't do this, I'll get skinned alive by my wife, she drinks water, too.
If there's insurance on certain matters that you would want, then the, the abatement is the place to go.
So does that sound reasonable to you, and you're willing to sign off on what I've asked for, just a impermeable liner that stops?
So to be clear, it's not an impermeable liner in the entire facility. In the event that there is a fire, we would place an impermeable liner and direct the water to a containment area and then pump it out. Yes, during the event of a fire, we just commit to lining with an impermeable layer around the water drain and then the collection. It will not be a part of standard design to line that is hired, that is a storage area, which really is not cost-effective and more, does not help anything unless there is an event. So yes, to sponsor an event, we commit to having an impermeable liner attached to a container.
Does that sound reasonable?
As long as they got a containment area and, and, you know, where the runoff can go to and then be taken care of properly.
So we will, we will get a second on this thing, and we'll pass it, hopefully, and it'll be based on you signing off on the fact that you are gonna stop bad firewater from going into the water sands down below.
Yeah, but incorporate it into the emergency response.
Okay. I need a second.
I have a question first, 'cause you're talking about this impermeable thing, only if there's a fire, you're gonna put it in, put it in then, or you're gonna put it in now? How, how can you put it in once the water's already running down to the containment pond?
For the, the storage, it's an act to contain what-
Okay, if the water's inside the, inside the, the battery containment module?
Right.
Then you'll lay the impermeable down and, and let it go down to the, or just suck it out of the module?
That would be the emergency response procedure that would be incorporated.
Yeah, so, okay.
I need a second, please.
What are we doing a second on? What's the second for?
To create the abatement.
Okay, I have some things to say, I guess.
Okay.
Alright, I am a landowner, so I get what Mr. Albright and, and what they're doing out on Cliff Road, I get all of that. It is hard to make money on cattle, it's hard to make money on farming because of the droughts and everything else, but first of all, this, this company is from the UK, and I have nothing against the UK, but when they want to pack up and leave, they will pack up and leave, and they will leave all of this stuff on y'all's place, Stephen. I'm sorry, I, that's what I believe. I don't care how much money you put in escrow or a bond or anything, these people are not from our country, we have no laws against or to fight, you gotta go over there and fight them.
Well, actually, any dispute over the terms of the contract, we do have contract terms at venues here in Goliad County.
Right, but if you can't find them, you can't sue them.
I expect that can-
And I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I'm not against you putting them out there, that's, that's your choice, that's your land, that's your choice. I would never, ever tell anybody what to do on their land as long as it's safe, and it sounds like they got it pretty safe. The other thing is, if we give them a seventy percent, seventy percent abatement, we go from making three point million dollars a year in taxes, if my pencil is correct, to seven hundred and sixty thousand, if my pencil is correct. That's, that's what we go to.
If they come at all.
So three point two million dollars difference per year. That's with the seventy percent.
If the project goes without tax abatement.
That's correct. That's not even counting your, your ag prices that, I mean, your ag property going off of ag, of course, it'd be more than the three point nine million with that. Every county I've talked to, well, so there's three of them, Calhoun, Wharton, Jackson, thirty thousand acres in these, these farms, I think in Wharton. Calhoun, I believe, is working on a fifteen thousand acre, plus they already have them. Jackson County, I don't know how many acres, but they have solar farms also. No abatements, zero abatements. They built it anyway because what attracts them is our power lines and, and our, of course, land. I was also told that a lot of the power is, is used to rotate the, the solar panels during the night or day. Coal versus, well, fossils fuel, fossil fuel versus solar. Not all of us have production on our property here, we all wish we did, but that is, that is bringing in our money, that's, that's, brings in money into our county, whether that well is on your property, my property, or anybody's property. That would be gas, of course, coal, we don't have coal. Fossil fuel generates a hell of a lot more electricity than any wind or solar, and they can crank it up and it burns during the heat of the day, the cold of the day, night or day. Of course, we gotta get them at a gas plant, but who says they'll ever do it? Employees, we will loo-, there will be one employee per, per area, per, per farm, maybe, maybe one, one employee for two farms out on the cliff. Where you, you said the power plant, yeah, they, they brought in a lake, they brought in multiple employees, and it, they, they pretty much guaranteed it for forty years, it's been going for forty-two right now. The school, they've talked, she just talked about not giving an abatement- The school, they've talked, she just talked about not giving an abatement or giving an abatement. They have taken their homestead tax, they have removed that this year, if I've been told right, twenty, twenty percent, something like that. So, that has been removed. So, and also, I've always been told that the state does not want the schools to allow an abatement because that's more state money that has to be given to the schools instead of property tax money. What else? I wrote down a lot of notes. Lois Coharts has said no abatements. She told the Calhoun County Commissioners just whatever, a couple of days ago, a week ago, whatever, no abatements. Don't do it. I'm sorry, but this is our home, yes, yes. I, we want nice roads and EMS and sheriff department, but we can't give it away. We can't give it away. I'm sorry. Seventy percent. That's just not right.
It's not really seventy percent. The land will be, will not be included in that. It's not part of the abatement process.
Tulsiito?
It goes from about ninety-something percent abatement down to fifty dollars an acre. We all enjoy having ag exemptions. I never hear anyone complain about it, you included.
I pay my taxes with a smile every year.
And these guys will pay their taxes with a smile also.
Tulsiito, we approved them three years ago. They got a two-year contract with a one-year extension. Their extension, I believe, is up this month. They will have to come back to the, to the court for this, and I will not give them an abatement. I will not vote for them an abatement. They have not done anything in three years. They said there's some old panels they laid out there. They have not got a contract with, with AEP to hook them to. This money that builds these solar farms comes from our income tax money, federal government. And we're gonna give it to people that are gonna make money on it and send it overseas instead of right here. There again, I have nothing against the UK. They're great partners of ours, but I would rather see it come to, back to the United States. That's all I got right now, and thank you.
I need a second on my motion, please.
So, Judge, the abatement is not negotiable. Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe Mr. Bruins is gonna vote against this.
I'm just asking a question. Is it negotiable or not?
You'd have to ask them.
Say again.
You know, to say, to say that we are, we're not gaining out of this, the way I figure it, we're getting about ten percent of our budget with the, these that we've got here today and the two others. We have no control over people having a bad business plan, the Tulsiito group. I have no control over that. But, NC is gonna come with it, and they're gonna get it built. Con Ed bought the paragraph from Solar, Solar Solutions, is that? Okay, Solar Prime. And they're moving dirt right now. I had a guy call me, an engineer call me today, wanting to know what the permit process for getting into that property was and building a road. And I said, none from us because it, they're gonna enter off 2441, call the state. So, we don't have any control over how fast business moves, but what you have to ask yourself is, what does it cost us other than time so far? What does it cost us? Yeah, we, we issued it two years ago. We sure did. It was the first one that we wrangled in.
Three years.
Okay, three years, whatever. Hadn't cost us a dime. Hadn't cost us a dime. Now, they're fixing to get underway, and we're gonna start making money off of it. This county's broke, and you can pretend like that's not the case, and that's fine. And the power plant has nothing to do with accepting this. If the power plant stayed in business, it would be great because we would have the one point one five eight million dollars that they're paying us now, and we would have the additional money that we're gonna get off these solar deals. And instead of just skipping stones and breaking, even when the power plant goes out of business, we would ever, we would actually have close to a million dollars to finish second half of a road.
But what you missed, three close neighboring counties, that's the only three I talked to, said no, and they built them anyway.
I would tell you to vote your conscience, sir.
Throw the dice.
Okay.
What was the question down here?
Is the abatement percentage negotiable?
It started at seventy-five the first time we talked.
We negotiated downwards to where we are now. We've reached...I have been working on this project for, I don't know, a year almost?
Yes, sir.
We've negotiated in good faith, based on the understanding I had that what the, the court generally, the general sense of the court would be. It's a little late, in my view, to start negotiating the basic terms. We've had essentially a gentleman's agreement, and I think that RES has acted in good faith. So, I hesitate to say we can negotiate different terms as of today. They've indicated that they would agree to remediate the concerns about fire hazard and water contamination, and we will come forward with a supplemental agreement to address that particularly. But, no, sir, I'm not inclined to think we can negotiate the other terms at this point. I may be old school. I think that gentleman's agreement have, you know, that, when I work with somebody, I'm in good faith, and I don't back away from my agreements. No, sir.
Right, and the battery thing is, I'll take the heat on that, but it's something, we have to protect our groundwater. We just do.
And candidly, from the response that we received, it was our understanding, I thought, that they had adequately addressed that. But, these additional terms, they've been gracious enough to say they would work with us on it. We will supplement it.
I don't think we're asking for much more. In fact, we can save them some money on putting the pit together. He'll be happy.
Otherwise, I think that the abatement agreement that's on the table is with the one that needs to be voted on. If you want to go back and renegotiate, you'd have to cancel today's hearing and, and come back with different terms.
Just to clarify, this is the four thousand acres of, in the fourteen thousand acres that we're voting on right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I've sat here quite a while. I need to go to the bathroom, but, but I'm not gonna let that influence me. So...
I got a feeling.
The counties that David referred to, and I've, I've listened to the same commissioners, the same judges, but they're, they're not over a barrel like we are. You know, the man that came in complaining that I didn't do the other half of the road, there wasn't any money. I worked it, I really stretched everything I had to get what I got done, and I'm surprised I got it done as cheap as I did and to have it decent quality. But the bottom line is, these roads, in, in my situation, haven't had anything done to them in fifteen, twenty years. And it's that way out through our county, and we need the money for this. These, these two projects, in my mind, don't, do not impact a lot of people. They're out in the, on the prairie where there's, there's really nothing out there that's, that's gonna harm anything. Yes, we're gonna worry about the water and all the other, but as far as just being in our backyards, they're not. And with the situation of our, of our county coffers, I'm gonna second that motion.
You're seconding it?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Judge, I'm gonna circulate. There's three sets of documents. One will go into your minutes. One goes back to RES, and I keep a copy in my file, so that if file here gets lost or something happens to it, there's another copy. But, I flagged each of the signature blocks that need to be signed off on, so I'm gonna ask the commissioners to sign these.
And then, Judge, the abatement agreement, and then the road agreement has the commission signature.
I won't sign the abatement, but the road agreement and their separate, all separate signature?
Yes, there's a order created.
Yes, sir.
Right, it was just a judge. Yes, it was just a judge. Why, it was just a judge. Yes, it was just a judge. What do we want us to sign, Judge?
I don't see any place for us to sign.
All right, so this last page here is the, this last signature page. Okay, this is, this is the abatement. And only the ju, okay, only the judge signs this. Which is that one? And this is the road agreement?
Kenneth, now's your chance. Now's your chance. We're gonna get back into it.
I'm all right. We won't be much...
Same, oh, this is the other project?
We still have to talk about it.
I shouldn't say.
You better, yeah.
For each project.
First flag is for the abatement agreement.
Sir?
Sitting back there.
Kenneth, Kenneth, sign that one.
Next one.
Check, see if I signed it where I was supposed to.
I learned when I was...
Check, see if I signed it where I was supposed to. I think I did. There's two places. Which one's this one?
There's three of these in here.
Right. So, is this the same, is this the only one we've done so far? See, we, we've...
The only one we signed, all three of them. What's there you need to sign?
This is the Clip Road one. That's, that's the, that's the key. Okay, all right, I got you. Okay. Good catch.
All right.
Okay, I'll find it in a minute. Okay.
Thank you.
You signed it.
Last one's the road agreement.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. This is Clip Road. Okay, I believe we had done a lot. We need to talk about it.
Send a lot of papers into the clerk, and they're not signing. Yes.
All right.
Already signed one of them.
Well, I'm not making much.
Oh, three?
Three roads.
That's right, road agreement was part of it.
I'm not making much.
Yes, sir.
It's just, we're here to prove it. We don't approve it. This is, we've already done it. We should have done it. We've done it right. Sorry, David Field. Maybe it's time to give that now.
We gotta make money. He knows, he knows we need the money. I'm not crazy about that yet. Like I said, it's...
I'd much rather sit cows. No one disagrees.
You're gonna get a room here tonight, because have you seen the weather out there? It's hammering. It's pretty bad.
We haven't done the weaser yet.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay, so now, when, when will the...
Kenneth.
We don't get any payments until construction starts, which will be...
Until they go into commercial operation.
Right.
As not extended to...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. Okay, so when, he said Paragon is moving dirt, is that in commercial operation now? You gotta have a...
They have to have a little government.
Okay, okay.
Because we need to now, need to download the tax abatement agreement for Clip Road. It's a separate entity.
Because we've already done the road. We already had the road agreement for Clip Road.
We have the road agreement and the tax abatement agreement for Clip Keys Hollow. We need to approve or at least vote on. The road use agreement has already been voted on.
Right, for Clip Road.
And for Clip Road, and then the tax abatement needs to be voted on for Clip Road.
Item number eleven.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve a tax abatement agreement with the Clip Road Solar LLC to provide economic development within Goliad County Reinvestment Zone, Clip Road, located within Goliad County in accordance with Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code, upon land described in the application and public notices required by law for the construction of a solar power generating project of approximately two hundred megawatts capacity and the estimated cost of one hundred and sixty million dollars. Need a second on that, please.
And that would be subject to the same supplemental agreement pertaining to the firefighting water issues that would be part of the, all three of the projects will have that addendum to them.
Need a second on Clip Road.
Now, that, that was, sometimes I don't hear everything I should. That, that was with the water protection on our underground water?
Yes, sir, there, there was an understanding that we, there was an oral agreement, but we're gonna reduce that to writing so that the specific terms of what they are gonna do, that will be an addendum to this agreement. But, I'll have to, I don't have the ability to paper it tonight, so we'll have to take that up at a later date.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we just... Okay, so this is not the abatement, then? This is, he does the abatement? Okay, and the, okay, so we're, this is the zone, this is the road agreement?
This one's complete. They are signing, two commissioners have not signed.
Kenneth. He needs a second.
That's a lot of rain, Kirby.
Yeah, and it's coming, and it's got a big, a big amount to come.
Right, big, heavy cell.
It's raining in my house, hopefully, right now.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And yours, too.
Just getting there, yeah. Just getting here to town right now.
Mm-hmm.
Goes all the way back to, shit.
Goes back a long ways, doesn't it?
Oh, my God, yeah. Petula. Eagle Pass, almost.
Oh, my. San Antonio. It's mine. Just an agenda item.
Good. Needed it so bad.
Uvalde, Del Rio.
About to lose life.
And we're in AEP territory, so we're liable to lose the power any minute.
Oh, I'm Victoria electric. It's probably off already.
This is AEP, I think?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
So it, it, AEP usually goes off for Victoria.
Yeah, GVC's guaranteed.
That's right, I, that's mine. I still got power, I bet you.
Who you missing? I've got Murray Ellin.
Well, use the bathroom. I'll make it. There you go, time. In fact, I'm gonna go use the bathroom.
Y'all, y'all, I thought Kenneth had to go.
Missing. Three coffees. What I'd like to do is visit with you or a week or four weeks. Maybe after a while. Go out and sit on the court, and talk, that's what we've been doing. See what we can do to make it work. So I'm not even gonna make a move. I'm just.
Huh? Yeah, yeah. I don't think he's gonna make a motion. I think he's gonna ask for a motion, make one, and we use it. I think he should just die for making a motion.
Well, if he, if he does, he's gotta give a second.
I'm not gonna do it. We don't even have, once we give, we do that, we don't need any paperwork.
Take, take no action. Take no action.
That's right, put on the.
I gotta.
Okay, we'll take no action. So, do you have any issue with taking no action until they give us further information on the Weezer project? Because they've already.
That's what worries me, that's in our main watershed. You know, that's like I said, over here, it's affecting everybody. It's not really even in that watershed.
Is that a back stretcher behind you? A back stretcher?
All right, let's get it.
All right. Made a decision, we're gonna take no action on the Weezer project until we get some further information.
No action on, on thirteen and fourteen?
Sir?
No action on thirteen and fourteen?
No action on, on doing the abatement or anything with Weezer until further.
Okay.
What kind of information we waiting on? What kind of information are?
Any more information about where, what the project's gonna look like, what the parameters of it are gonna be, if it's indeed gonna have batteries? All sorts of things.
I thought that was given to us already. That was already given to us, a map and everything.
I got a very rough map that had nothing to do with visual mitigation, sir. Did you?
Yes, sir.
You could share it with me.
Yeah.
You know what it's gonna look like?
They emailed all that to us.
Those were pictures of other people's projects?
No, no, they had a picture of the Andor Weezer on both sides of the highway, both sides of one eighty-three. Yes, sir, and next to Abremite Road, Albright Road.
There were no pictures of the mitigation efforts along the fence line. If you have it, please share it.
Well, it'd be back in an email last year, but.
Okay.
It's in this one, huh?
All right, so.
So you're taking no action on the Weezer?
Taking no action on this.
Weezer project?
Weezer project until further notice.
Okay.
There's a lot of people out there that don't want it at all.
I hear you. I hear them.
They get to say. That's the reason we doing what we're doing. So. That's all on the Weezer. I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Need a second?
Yet, public announcements at the end.
Do we have any public announcements?
Sorry to extend this, but I promised I would do this for Ernest Allenase, who's out of town. There's a change in management at the Presidio Lobbya. The Goliad Historical Society is pleased to welcome Bishop Brendan Cahill, Diocese of Victoria, Bill Irwin, Director of Historical Sites and Operations for the Texas Historical Commission, and Scott McMahon, Presidio Lobbya Site Manager. They will discuss the upcoming partnership on change in management of the Presidio Lobbya with the Texas Historical Commission taking the lead in daily operations. Over the next year, Texas Historical Commission plans to add staff, work to upgrade the sites' infrastructure, and begin interpretive planning to enhance the visitor experience. The event will take place on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at six P.M. at the Julie Wimberly Building at the Goliad County Fairgrounds. There will be order served from six P.M. to six thirty P.M., after which there'll be a presentation, and the floor will be open for question and answer period. Thank you. And he invites all of you to, all of y'all, and the commissioners and judge to function.
I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.